I'd like to call the meeting of the planning board of the Township of Ocean to order. Call, please. Here. Move to the flag, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the township clerk on July 25, 2018. There are emergency exits through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. We also have a no smoking policy. Our board policy tonight will be that no new testimony will be taken after 9:45 and there will be a 10:00 PM close to this meeting. In addition, the applicant will be, we might stretch this, limiting the applicant to one hour of testimony, but that might be stretched. All meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township of Ocean's community cable channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. We have minutes for approval. Will somebody?
I'll move that.
Second?
Second.
These minutes, by the way, from April 15, 2019, regular meeting.
Yes.
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 Yes. We have, Case 1 on the list is carried to June 24, 2019. That's called Mamano, Block 33.14, Lot 2, 710 West Park Avenue, Ocean. Another carried case to June 24, 2019 is number 2 Delaney, Block 35, Lot 5, 1206 West Park Avenue, Ocean. A new case this evening is number 3, as it appears on your list, Matthew and Christine Clark, Block 140, Lots 98 and 99, 400 Lincoln Drive, Ocean, Zone R4. Mr. Brodsky, how are you tonight, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Yeah, well, because I told you I was going to do this segment first.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a favor?
Yes.
Any chance of bringing up the small site plan one that we discussed first?
Oh, yes.
Just throwing it out there.
He's got some pull. Well, that's, thanks for the reminder.
You're welcome, sir. Sorry, Matt.
We have the, I don't usually recall the name of it because I don't have it, I don't think, or do I? Thank you. Okay. We have the minor site plan subdivision approval for the Jewish Community Center of Monmouth County.
I think it's a site plan.
It's a site plan, right. So we are...
So we're asking for the recommendation of the minor subdivision committee?
And we voted upstairs? No, I make a motion to accept the minor site plan.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Now we can proceed with case number three.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from case number three and the following case due to conflicts. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Hey, you too.
So for the record, Mr. Serra is leaving the room. Hold the applause.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant, Matthew and Christine Clark. Service in order, Mr. Brown.
I understand from staff that it is in order, is that right?
Correct. Great, thank you, thank you. Application, the application before you this evening pertains to the property located at 400 Lincoln Drive. It's a single-family residential home, which is owned by Mr. and Mrs. Clark. It's an existing, single-family, single-story residence. It is, 400 Lincoln Drive is adjacent to an undersized parcel that is owned by the Township of Ocean. And what the application seeks this evening is approval for a subdivision slash lot line adjustment. So the Clarks have entered into an agreement which has been approved by ordinance by the township to shift the lot line to acquire a portion of this undersized township-owned property. And that's what we're here for this evening, shift that line. It involves a property, a parcel that consists of approximately 3,314 square feet of township-owned property that is being, that will be subdivided off that existing underutilized, undersized parcel and then will be consolidated with the Clark's existing home. And as, and sort of as part of this process, the Clarks intend to do a, an approximately, approximate 630 square foot addition on the second floor of their home, no increase in the footprint. They're just going to go up to add the 630 square feet. The variances that are associated with the application consist primarily with respect to the township's undersized lot, it's just getting a little more undersized. In terms of where the lot line was, was proposed or is proposed, was really driven by virtue of the fact that although the township doesn't utilize the property for anything, there is a drainage pipe that exists on the remaining parcel. And in consult with the township engineer, he had indicated and the township had agreed that the township would maintain some easement space on either side of that pipe, that pipe will remain in place. Both of these properties back up onto Deal Lake. So that remains in place, carved off this little sliver will become part of the Clark property. And that's really the nature of the application.
You get the one variance for the second story.
Yes.
Even though it doesn't exacerbate, it doesn't exacerbate the amount of the nonconformity, it's still...
Yes, that's correct. So the proposed second, even though this is a single-family, existing, single-story residence, there is a walkout basement. So by virtue of putting this 630 square foot addition on this, on a portion of the second floor, technically constitutes...
To clarify, it's variance for a third story, I believe.
Yes. It's the second story addition, in my mind, I refer to it as second story, it's considered to be a third story because there is a walkout basement. There's no height variance, no, nothing like that.
Front yard setback variance because the front yard of the existing home is nonconformal?
Correct. So, yes, and that is 26 feet to the covered, existing covered porch, which is not being touched or affected by this, where 30 feet is required, unaffected by this application, existing condition. Surprisingly, this is, this process has gone on for some time, there are various different iterations. I do have Mr. Besch here who can walk the board through the plan that's proposed. So if we can have Mr. Besch step forward and be sworn real quick.
Mr. Besch, raise your right hand, please. Promote the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
You've seen Mr. Besch so many times, I don't think we need to...
Well, for the record...
Dave, you've testified before this board once or twice, is that correct?
A few times.
Yeah, so... I was trying to give you some time to figure that.
On the interim, what are you qualifying him as?
I'm the project, he, Mr. Besch prepared the plan that was...
Prepared by his office?
I'm the project manager for the firm. I prepared the plot plan that represents the proposed addition to the home and I'm the project manager coordinating the minor subdivision with Robert Morris, a professional land surveyor in our office. What I have before you on the easel is a copy of the plot plan that was submitted. I don't know if...
Yes, and should we go ahead and mark this? It's an exact copy of what's been submitted, but...
No.
Okay.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
Yes.
And for the record, we'll have the packet marked as V1.
Okay, so the, the properties are lots 98 and 99 in Block 140. 98 is, is the triangular wedge-shaped piece that is owned by the township. 99 is the Clark homestead. The proposal is to subdivide off 3,314 square feet off of Lot 98 and merge it with Lot 99, leaving 2,824 square feet in proposed Lot 98.01, which will remain in township ownership. As Mr. Brodsky had indicated, we're also proposing a second floor addition of 630 square feet over top of the garage portion, shall we say, of the home at the eastern end. The second floor addition will fall completely over top of the existing footprint of the home, but by virtue of the definition of a story above grade, that second floor addition, although it appears as two stories from the street, is defined as a three-story addition because of the grade at the back of the property or north end of the property. The front yard setback variance applies to the covered front porch, not the finished wall of the house. The covered porch has an open railing system, so there is visibility through that section even though it technically is deficient in setback by approximately four feet.
I'm just interested in finding out why, why are you taking this piece of land from the township? What's the, what's the reasoning behind by getting more?
Purchasing the property in order to increase the amount of usable side yard for, for the existing home. We're not, it's not necessary in terms of, no side yard setback variance is required. But the idea was that, that this acquisition would be undertaken to increase the size of the property to facilitate and sort of add to the investment into the addition of the property.
Do you don't, there's no, they're not gaining an advantage other than making their lot bigger, right?
If anything, it's...
They're not buying...
They'll get to pay some...
They are buying the property.
Oh, they are.
They're buying the property.
They're buying the property from the township.
And it'll become more valuable, so they'll be paying more taxes.
Yeah, their, the advantage is they're going to get to pay some more taxes.
There you go, that's the reason.
Questions for Mr. Besch?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
With the public, anybody in the public would like to question this particular witness? No? Say yes. Step up to the microphone, introduce yourself and...
Jackie Wenzel, Deal Road. How big is this sliver? How much space are we talking about?
3,314 square feet will be taken from the township lot. In terms of acreage, it's less than a tenth of an acre.
And will they take trees down?
There's no trees proposed to be taken down.
Are there trees on the lot?
There are some trees on the lot at the periphery, but the proposed improvement is directly over top of the footprint of the existing house.
Explain...
They're adding a second floor to the existing house.
Right, so they're not going to take down in landscaping any more trees? Because that's the thing, because the township's losing trees at a dramatic rate these days.
We are not proposing to remove any trees.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that has any commentary regarding this particular witness's testimony? Step up.
Hello. My name is Jeff Hunt and I live in Colonial Terrace. And I did speak with Matt and I'm very happy he's going to be able, hopefully, to increase his property, the, the actual size of his home. There is a, a home two doors down that, you know, has a third story and their property juts out.
Jeff, you have to ask questions of...
Oh, do I, okay.
You can ask questions of Mr. Besch regarding his testimony. Comments will come later.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, maybe I misspoke, so...
I'm sorry. No, 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 that's fine.
But you'll get another chance. So anyone else, questions for Mr. Besch? No?
No other witnesses, Mr. Brodsky?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
So you close your presentation?
That's correct.
Before Rick does, I just have one comment. There's an error in my report, the first one I've made in 35 years.
Everyone's talking about that, Jim.
I actually read the ordinance that I wrote 30 years ago. I identify a variance that's necessary for location on an improved right-of-way and that variance is not necessary because they're not proposing to build a structure, to build a house on that lot, so that variance is not necessary.
And Bill, do you have anything to add?
No, I have no open hearing.
Right, open this portion to public commentary regarding this particular application. Go right ahead, Jeff.
So Jeff, because you're going to give a comment, raise your right hand, please. Promote the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do, Counselor.
All right, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you. The, I'll make it really quick and short. The only thing that I would like to, you know, bring before the board is that it does sound like this variance to build that extension really doesn't need this parcel of land. I don't know if the Deal Lake Commission has been contacted or advised about this proposal because when we did the dredging of Deal Lake, we actually built an access point. I did the access point, the road, the proposed road that went down into the lake. And from what, the way I understand it, the Deal Lake Commission may not be doing the extensive type of dredging that they did where we made the road go down and bend to the right and go all the way down to the bridge, basically. And then we had an extension that went to the, towards the golf course. And that they use for the transportation of vehicles to bring, or really to cart the soil away that was being dredged out. And the only thing I really want, and I saw where the, the proposed line is, but I do know that they're trying to make that more a recreational area. You know, there are cars that do park in that area. I, I don't want to slow up this process, I want, you know, them to receive their, their approvals to do their construction. But I would just caution you about the, the actual lot. I know there's a sewer, you know, a water line that goes down and I don't think that lot line, the proposed lot line, you know, is past that. You know, I, again, I haven't really seen the map and I'm not sure, but I just really caution you and I would ask that, you know, you look at the, or at least contact the Deal Lake Commission to see if they're, if this would impact their future plans. Because the land is, you know, has an access road and I just think it's worth considering. You know, I know there's future dredging plans and this, this lot, you know, might be impacted, especially if it gets transferred to an individual. So I just start to throw that out to you. You know, I think it's important, but again, I'm not on the commission and I appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Jeff, just let the members of the board, the public, know where you live. You're a neighbor, aren't you?
Yes, directly across and Matt, they both keep their, Christine, you make your property look beautiful. They're great neighbors and I'm not trying to impact their proposal at all. I just, I just am concerned about the, the use of the lot.
And are you involved at all with the Deal Lake Commission?
I, I, not serving on their, but I, I do get involved with their projects and things like that. And I was very involved in the original dredging. And like I said, I actually built the road, took down the trees, did a lot, a lot of work on that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie?
Yeah, I guess I just want to make a comment.
So we have to have you sworn in, Jackie, like everybody does for comments? You promote the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I just, everybody in this recent election ran on open space and preservation of maintaining the character of our neighborhood. So I guess I would say if it's not necessary to build the second level of your home to acquire town land, we won't really have control over it if, once they own it. So I guess my statement would be I would rather the township preserve what open space we have, which is what was the platform everyone ran on this election. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a commentary on this application? Other than Bill, would you know anything about the Deal Lake Commission's involvement in this?
No.
The access road, anything like that? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I would tell you that this, the, the precise reason that the, the Clarks are not obtaining or acquiring the entirety of the lot and they're, and, and have had to go through this entire subdivision approval is because from the town and the township engineer, they wanted to, and demanded, and refused to sell the entirety of the lot for, for access reasons, for drainage reasons, for all of the reasons that have been raised. So that is really what drove the requirement of having to proceed, go through this entire process because it would have been much easier to just acquire the entirety of the, of the parcel, but the town was looking to maintain the, the access and the existing pipe and easement in order to access any drainage pipes that are on the property for 10 feet on either side of that. So that's why there's only this small 3,000, 3,300 square foot sliver that's being conveyed.
Okay. And that's the bulk of your case, that's your case?
Yes, yes, and, and I mentioned earlier that, you know, this was, has gone through the process with the, with the town, there's an ordinance approving the sale, setting forth the adequate consideration, the specific legal descriptions for the parcel to be transferred.
And just, to the board as aware, I just looked at the tax map and apparently the width of the access point with this, this subdivision as proposed would be about 87 feet wide.
I'm not sure, what do you mean?
In other words, the frontage, between the frontage of the stub, of the stub of Overbrook Avenue and the frontage of the new lot, the new township lot on Deal Lake, that would total a, total of 87 feet, you know, 30 feet and 57 feet.
So that corner down there that looks like a point is 87 feet wide?
No, the, the top part of the, of the lot. That's why it's a triangular lot. Goes from a point at, at...
How wide, how wide is the point? And is there access from the road to the point?
Yeah, there is, there's a 60-foot wide right-of-way, right there.
That Overbrook Avenue.
That's Overbrook Avenue. And then that widens out to 87 feet.
There's a street running that way?
That's correct.
Adjacent to that parcel?
Yes.
So there's access to that whole property?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
No problem.
Okay. Somebody make a motion to close the public hearing?
I second.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes. Would somebody please make a motion to vote for a positive resolution on this application?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Who caught the mistake? Did Bill catch the mistake?
No, Chip caught it, no mistake.
He caught his own mistake?
He does.
Bill? Yeah? Hey, Dan, could you get up to overall?
I did, thank you. Of his report?
Did it list that?
Then pass it to the side, if he doesn't have it, there were 16 meets.
Okay.
Yeah, press it down.
Should have known that.
You didn't get one?
Oh, Bill's report.
Bill's report. Yeah, we got Bill's report.
Oh, there it is.
Moving down, okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Got the next case on the list. Deal 35 Land LLC, Block 33, Lot 19.01, 1603 State Highway 35, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone C7. Ms. Krimko?
Hold, thank you, Ms. Krimko. Mr. Levy will now leave the dais because he's disqualified as he has been throughout. Rest of the board members are qualified. Has everybody read or listened to the tape, rather, for the meeting from last time?
I did again.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And has Mr. Levy recused or just not eligible? Okay, disqualified. Okay, thank you. Jennifer Krimko, on behalf of the applicant, Deal Land 35 LLC. Okay, thank you. Jennifer Krimko, on behalf of the applicant Deal Land 35 LLC. As the board remembers, we had wrapped up at the last meeting with the, our traffic expert. Since then, we had agreed to meet with Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Higgins to further refine the urban jug handle design and take into consideration the additional comments that were offered by the board and by the public. We did submit a bunch of additional concept drawings. I would like to introduce them and give them designations for identification. For identification purposes, and I'm just going to run through it because they've all been submitted. They're all on file for more than 10 days. A54, I believe, is where we are. And that's an urban jug handle concept at 30 scale by Mazer Consulting, revised through 5219, consisting of one sheet. A55 is the same drawing at 50 scale. A56 is intersection improvements, Route 35 and Deal Road, also Mazer, also 5219 in one sheet. It's all going to be up on the, it'll all be up for you on the PowerPoint. A57, the existing jug handle modifications by Mazer dated 5219, consisting of one sheet. A58, the intersection improvements of Deal Road and Logan Road by Mazer dated 5219. A59, the auxiliary lane exhibit by Mazer dated 5219. A60, the urban jug handle concept with aerial photograph by Mazer dated 43019. And then lastly, for, as it relates to this witness, A61, a supplemental traffic analysis prepared by Langton Engineering dated 5919. So with introducing those for identification purposes as we go through the PowerPoint, would you like me to let Bill do his report before we start? Look at that. I can, I can read this now.
You can read mine. You can read mine. So we'd like, Bill, please, sure.
All right, Mr. Chairman, yep. I have a report dated May 20th, and we'll paraphrase it just to be on the more efficient side. Okay, what, what I really referred to in my report almost in its entirety is the, is the drawing that you see on the screen to the left side of the room. And just to point out, we had some discussions at the last public hearing about the actual onsite shape that an urban jug handle might be able to take. And one of the questions I asked is, could it be, in essence, wrapped around the development that's proposed for the entire southwest quadrant of the site? And the answer now is yes. Okay, and that, in my opinion, is the best layout that we've seen for the site. I know the fellows at Mazer worked really hard. The nice thing about it is that, number one, minimizes conflicts with the urban jug handle, which is Road A on the map, if you will, and it makes the interior more efficient. So in essence, you get a number of different users, uses that appear as individual pads, but certainly permits the shared parking that would occur in a mixed-use development like this. So it's, it's a really nice layout, plus it sort of maximizes the periphery vegetation and landscaping that could be put in. With regard to that, I think tonight's focus, and what I'm asking to hear about, at least anyway, from my engineering perspective, is that onsite travel speeds. How will travel speed be regulated and what will it be on the urban jug handle? I think that question was asked by a member of the audience at the last hearing in terms of, and how does that affect site distance at the intersection of Road A and Road B, which is actually back at the curve at the upper right portion of the commercial development southwest of the urban jug handle, as well as the site distances available to interior driveways where they intersect with the, the site distances, where they intersect with the urban jug handle. And finally, recommend again that the sign now, now that there is elimination of the far side jug as a dedicated route, if you will, and elongation of the lane between, the widening between Deal Road and the proposed entrance on Highway 35, I'm asking them to reconsider and relocate the site ID sign so that it is south of or upstream, traffic-wise, of the entrance to the site. I think that functions better in general.
And just a few items of clarification before we have Dan address those, a couple of things. The first one is, the plans that were submitted, as you're aware, are concept in nature. They're not fully engineered. So the applicant recognizes that, for purposes of presentation, it's really with regard to layout of the site. And we recognize, and for the public's benefit, we will be submitting fully engineered revised plans that will address all of the stormwater management, revised landscaping as it relates to this. As part of these plans, there were some minor, and before we get into traffic, Dan, you were sworn at the last meeting and you remain under oath at this meeting.
Yes.
Okay, before, there were some changes as to the layout. I just want to call it to your attention. You'll see it in more detail as we submit the detailed plans. So Dan, one of the things is, is part of the plans we submitted at the last meeting, we had a bank on the corner, and that's kind of been relocated around now that we've moved the urban jug handle to the east, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you just highlighted where the proposed bank is. And there were some modifications with regard to the size of the retail as well, and we submitted revised drawings that when the architect testifies can go into greater detail about that. If you could just point out that location. Okay, and.
Jeremy's actually doing it, but yes, go ahead.
Oh, I thought you had the, I thought, I didn't know why you kept looking at Jeremy. Got it now. So recognizing that this will all become further established, and with regard to the relocation of the sign, to your understanding, it was Jeremy's testimony at, I think, the original meeting, that the reason for the sign being located to the sap, to the north was twofold. If you just want to go over that again?
Certainly. The two reasons for the location of that's. Yeah, that's better. Two reasons for the sign location as it relates to the right-in, right-out driveway along Route 35. We are showing it on the north side of that driveway. First reason is there's another pylon sign to the south of that driveway that would be associated with the convenience store with gas operation. And there's also a contemplated stormwater, stormwater management feature in that portion of the site to the south of the right-in, right-out driveway. So for those two reasons, we wanted to keep a separation between the two pylon signs along Route 35, as well as in our design, it contemplates a stormwater management feature that would preclude placement of the sign to the south of that driveway.
Now, recognizing that we're going to be redesigning, we could certainly look at whether or not that's possible. And I imagine there'll be at least one, if not many more, tech reviews with Mr. Fitzgerald. So we hear the request and we'll discuss it, but as of right now, it is still being shown there. Additionally, now that we've relocated the urban jug handle and moved its entrance and exit onto Deal Road much further to the east, thereby bringing the entrance into the commercial portion to the east, we've also reloc, proposing to relocate the pylon, not the pylon sign, sorry, the monument sign at that location, and it would need a variance as we're going to get to in one of the exhibits. But I just want to point that out as a change as well to the board.
That is correct. So that driveway's moved approximately 80 feet east from what we originally showed at the last meeting on the concept plan. And part and parcel to that driveway location, that proposed monument sign along Deal Road has also slid farther to the east.
Now, we have, we have eliminated the Wawa sign with the LED, and we're just proposing, as was, as will be presented, Jeremy, you presented the signs, correct?
Yes.
Okay, as was presented by Jeremy, just the attractive monument sign, just identifying the driveway and the entrance. And it's your testimony, it's located there for safety, so the traveling public knows where to turn in?
That is correct. It's married to that driveway location. Correct.
Okay, so with that, and I thank you. With that, and I thank you, why don't you share with the board, we moved in your, for identification purpose, oh, no. We moved in your report, as was revised, and you issued a supplemental report to address the changes to the plan, both with regard to the development scheme change as well as the relocation. So before we address Bill's questions directly, just give the board a brief summary of that updated supplement.
Yes, we updated our analysis to reflect the current development program, which was slightly different than the original analysis because of the urban concept, jug handle concept, most notably the inclusion of a bank, which was never contemplated at originally. And we've prepared a supplemental traffic analysis dated May 9th, 2019. I believe that's Exhibit A61. And our conclusions are consistent with our original traffic study in that we do not anticipate any significant impacts associated with this project for the reasons that were stated originally in that traffic study, as well as reconfirmed in the supplemental analysis.
So effectively, there's no change to your conclusions originally, as well as the prior supplement as a result of the change, either with the urban jug handle or the change in the program?
Correct.
Okay, now turning to Mr. Fitzgerald's letter, and I assume we want to move that letter in as B? I don't know.
The answer is yes.
Okay, but I don't know what B we're up to.
Correct.
Not many.
We can put a pin on that and come back to it. How about we just do it B1 with today's date?
Also five.
Okay. So with regard to the questions that he asked.
Essentially, there were two, I believe, that your engineer was asking for a response to. One of them being the sight lines along the proposed urban jug handle alignment as they relate to the intersecting driveways and/or roadways. And we will, as part of detailed design, quantify those sight lines and available sight distances. Obviously, we will have to comply with whatever sight distance requirements there are. And it's going to be a collaborative process between us, your professionals, as well as DOT because they will ultimately be looking at that design as it relates to the jug handle itself.
And that, the sight distances and the requirements directly correlate to the speed of the road? So what are we proposing there?
That is correct. We contemplate that it would be posted for 20 miles per hour along that jug handle. And generally speaking, sight distances for that speed limit are on the order of about 200 feet.
Okay, and how would we propose to enforce the 20 miles an hour?
We would not be, in terms of the applicant, enforcing that. However, there would be.
I mean, from a design standpoint?
There'd be posted speed limit signs along the length of the jug handle in both directions.
Any other questions for Mr. DiSaro?
Yeah, so I, obviously, I'm seeing this for the first time. I wasn't here last month. So you added another entrance to Deal Road, correct?
No.
Well, you did, because prior, prior, it was only the jug handle.
Oh, you mean since your last, yes, since you were last here, the jug handle was all, before it became an urban jug handle, when it was just a far side jug handle, we didn't have access, but we still did have access from Deal Road, Dr. Benedetto.
The plan you saw, Dr. Benedetto, had the, had the urban jug handle. It had a, excuse me, a far side jug handle, a right-in, right-out driveway to Deal Road, and the connection opposite Logan Road.
And now we're just proposing right-in, right-out?
Okay.
Correct. So that, we've removed one less conflict point along Deal.
Is it, is it, have you looked at the possible point of bringing the jug handle all the way to the traffic light at Logan? Did you look at that at any point, or?
You might want to hear that. He'd asked if we looked at bringing the urban jug handle to connect it, to come out on Logan Road instead of having that access on Deal Road.
Well, it, it does connect with the driveway that comes in from Logan Road, but we were under the impression that the DOT was having a problem with the concept of a direct slip ramp, which.
What does that mean? I'm not sure.
Be able to just short-circuit the whole site by going in from the intersection at Logan and Deal and going right around the site, right through the site to the highway.
Wouldn't that make better sense? Wouldn't that relieve Deal Road?
It's the DOT.
Okay, but I, I, I think what you're, if that's the pact that the DOT is taking, then this is about as close as you can come. It simply moves it a little further west, the point at which you slip off your road.
I think also.
Really doesn't.
Yeah, yeah. No, also, Dr. Benedetto, from a, from a use standpoint, practically speaking, and I'll ask in the form of a question to Dan. Dan, from, when designing commercial sites, and when it's a mixed-use site and there's commercial and residential, is it often the case that the residents prefer to have an entrance that is more dedicated to their use, separate from that of the commercial?
Yes.
And it enables the people who live there to come to and from without even getting into the commercial portion at all?
That, that's correct, and it creates a sense of a neighborhood for them.
Well, the other issue, Joe, is that just from a point of view of layout, if you were to take, look at the options real quick. If you come in heading north on Logan Road or make a right from westbound Deal North into the site, you'd either have to go around the total outside, which is the slip road that, as I understood, Mr. DiSaro indicated DOT said he didn't want to hear about, or make a left earlier, which would split the residential, which is really not a good idea to put a road like that right through a residential. So in essence, they simply took the slip point and pushed it a little further west. So you have that, or you can enter pretty much a residential at the easterly driveway.
Okay, and then I had another thought about maintaining the speed through the site by putting maybe those speed bumps?
I asked the very same question to Dan this afternoon, and Dan, your response was?
It will be subject to DOT. We will certainly ask the question, but I can't commit to you that's something that they would be inclined to agree to.
And one of the things I suggested to Dan is that when we are going through tech review with Mazer Consulting for the stormwater, that Dan participate in that to get Bill's feedback as to his suggestions that we can take to the DOT.
Okay.
Is there any number of traffic calming devices that can be deployed if, along with DOT is okay with it?
Yeah, I have just two questions. You said on Deal Road, how far is the setback from 35 now to the entrance of the urban jug handle? Or to the urban jug handle?
Why don't we switch the slide?
And I'd also like to know on 35, where you enter, how far that is down the road now?
Yeah, we have other, if we can go through the exhibits.
The 35 driveway hasn't changed from what we've always discussed.
Yeah, they're asking what the distance is, and I think that the board members had asked that question at the last meeting, which is what resulted in us moving that to the west was to give more separation.
I'd just like to know what it is.
And I'm stalling while our engineer is scaling it on his plan. You can tell Jeremy, he's under oath, he remains under oath?
All right, the distance from Deal Road to the, the entrance, the main entrance on the Highway 35 is about 530 feet, centerline to centerline.
All right, that's, it's 425 about the edge, centerline to centerline, about what Bill just said.
And that's Jeremy Lang. He was sworn at all of the meetings. He remains under oath. And what's the distance?
From 35 to the entrance on Deal Road is about 540 feet, plus or minus a couple of feet.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Do you want to move to the slide with, were there other changes, Dan, that you'd like to go over with regard to the other exhibits? Let's.
No, I think they were more informational.
Okay, so let's take a look at the one with the aerial and the sign, just to show the location of the sign.
And I don't know what the exhibit number for this one is.
Yeah, that one.
Just for the record.
That's A60.
So looking at A60 that is displayed, and zooming in on that exhibit, what is being displayed now is the Deal Road proposed entrance, and the monument sign, which will be non-digital, is shown to the east of the entrance side of that driveway.
And the approximate distance to the property line of the closest neighbor is? And the approximate distance to the property line of the closest neighbor is about ninety-three feet?
That is correct, as depicted on that exhibit.
Now, that sign isn't digital. But is it internally illuminated, externally internally illuminated? And if it is illuminated at all, is there, what is the proposed time for turning that illumination off at night and turning it on in the morning? I don't think you're picking up on this system.
Uh Jeremy Lang again. The sign is proposed currently to be internally illuminated. Uh as far as on and off times, I don't believe we've discussed that yet with the applicant, um but that's certainly something that could be discussed with the board.
And I think that summarizes the changes as shown on the concept plan, right, Dan?
Yes.
We'd certainly welcome questions from the board or the public as to what he's testified to so far.
Um if I'm coming east on Deal Road. So for me to uh over thirty-five, so I'm coming east on on Deal Road. There we go. Uh how would I enter into it making a left?
You have two choices. You can either take the far side jug handle on the southeast corner and then get onto thirty-five north to come in.
No, 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 that's not. I'm asking, how do I enter into?
He's just telling you how you enter. He's, so the second, his second answer is gonna be the one.
And then your other, your other option is to continue east down to the Logan Road connection and make a left turn in there, right? The driveway in between Logan and thirty-five is limited to right in, right out only.
Was my next question, 'cause it looks like.
Right, and Dan, there's a dedicated left turn lane into the site at that location as per the prior exhibits, right?
At the Logan Road connection, correct.
So the people making that left turn in won't hold up the flow of traffic.
That is correct.
That, that was my question because it looked like you had it where they couldn't make the left.
They, they cannot, either in or out.
Did we have a, I think, I think the meeting I was at last, uh we were talking about what. If you were gonna show us what Deal Road was gonna look like, how they were widening, do we have a?
Yeah, we did. We can go to that exhibit.
What exhibit number?
Um, looking as we speak, that's A fifty-eight. Yeah, the, I I would think it's the. No.
That shows a portion of of the widening. Do you have the ones, Jeremy, from the last meeting?
No, there's a new one just submitted.
As Jeremy's looking for it, um the widening's gonna be on the site side, so on the north side of Deal Road. And it's essentially gonna extend um from the Logan Road intersection all the way to the Route thirty-five intersection.
Will there be a dedicated right uh right lane to get into your site? With the widening?
There will not be, but there will be a second lane.
So there'll be two lanes on Deal Road?
Heading westbound.
Heading westbound.
And I will tell you, I did meet with your traffic safety officer, which I didn't get a chance to tell you on Friday.
You sure we wanna talk about? No, I'm just kidding.
Um and he was very favorable towards this plan. I think he echoed your engineer's comments that this is the best plan that he's seen to date for this project. So he's very complimentary. He wants some changes to the striping along Deal Road. As you come through the Logan Road intersection, he would like the striping to angle everyone into the middle lane. And then if somebody wants to turn into our driveway, they would come over. Um so we're gonna be making some slight changes to the striping. And one other thing that he did ask for that we're gonna have to investigate. And quite frankly, I didn't know this was occurring, but I can understand why. If you um can get me over to thirty-five in Deal, that westbound approach.
If you.
I'm sure everyone has noticed those flexible delineators on the center line, the double yellow line. Of Deal Road in the vicinity of where the jug handles come into Deal Road. I always thought that was people coming off the jug handle heading northbound that wanted to get to westbound Deal Road. To prevent them from swinging wide to get over to uh the the last in line of the queue waiting at the red light. He said, no, that's not the reason. He said people will actually cross over the double yellow going the wrong direction. To get into the left turn lane at the Route thirty-five.
That's why I was asking you if you were gonna extend Deal Road further onto your site. Add another additional lane.
Uh we are not, but what he would like to see, if possible, is to put a center median. In the area of the jug handles today, so that you'd have a four foot wide median.
Look, Dan, we are extending into our road to add a lane on Deal Road.
We are, but he would like a median to come down. Where this nearside comes, nearside juggle comes, comes onto Deal Road. He'd like a little median here with the appropriate signage. To preclude people from going on the wrong side of the center line. Not a Jersey barrier, correct.
So I, I can, I can confirm what the police said, 'cause I've actually seen people cross over the double line with those pylons. They are, and go to the left of the pylons to get up to the corner. Uh in one, one case, he actually passed a police car. He didn't get very much farther.
You know, as, as a resident, I drive on that road a lot, and it's backed up already. We need an additional lane there. I mean, I, I just don't, I, it's important to have more access. Through that part of Deal Road. I just, I don't know how you're gonna make all these turns in there.
We, well, we are providing an additional lane. So at the Route thirty-five intersection, you'll have a dedicated right turn lane, a dedicated through lane.
How much room?
Dedicated left turn lane.
How much, how much uh are you approaching on the property? How much are you taking?
In terms of uh footage?
Yeah.
It's probably on the order of fifteen feet.
And there was testimony at the last meeting. We had talked about extending, adding a second through lane, correct?
Correct.
And part of the reason we couldn't do that, you testified, um which, as you saw, was because of what's across the street. That the only way that that would work would be is if it could line up across the street and that would, we don't have control of across the street. Was that your testimony?
That is correct. You'd have to take property from the bank, the gas station, and the convenience store.
So as far as adding an additional lane, you're taking full advantage to the extent possible to get the flow of traffic through. By adding the additional lane on our property.
Correct.
I, I'm not talking about um west of thirty-five. I'm talking strictly east of thirty-five. On Deal Road from Logan to thirty-five, an additional lane.
We're adding an additional lane.
Adding another additional lane. You have plenty of space on your property. There's nothing on that buffer there. What's, what's, is there a setback there? Are they within normal or are they right against it?
Pretty, pretty right on the setback.
And with all due respect, what you're asking for is exactly what the applicant's proposing. We are widening Deal Road to provide an additional lane between Logan and thirty-five.
I, I don't think it's enough. There's not enough rain, there's not enough road now. You're adding more usage and it's gonna need more. I, I just, I, there's not enough access now.
Dan.
Here today at five o'clock. It's backed up all the way down the road.
Do you wanna?
Doctor, if I could uh project ahead. This may be a good time. I was asked to, to make an announcement uh at the beginning of the meeting, but uh we moved ahead quickly. It, it has been highlighted at past meetings that there's not to be any communication from, of course, the applicant's attorney. To anybody in the board and, and also uh people uh from the public to any board members. We understand that if you don't do this all the time, there may be a natural tendency to, to make a call. But that is uh not permitted. Uh the applicant's attorney has highlighted that before. We've tried to reconfirm that. And so, but without uh going into particulars, 'cause it's not necessary. But there was another attempt to, to contact the board. And if anybody wishes to make contact with the board, uh contact Ron. Because he loves to talk to people about any project. Well, he's willing to talk to uh people about projects. That said, uh it, it became um uh clear that there was a message uh about um. Uh someone in the public being interested in presenting a traffic expert. So um in light of your, your point, Dr. DiBenedetto, I, I think it's proper to find out now. Uh are uh people in the public planning to have a traffic expert today or next time? Why don't you come up?
She should come up.
Yeah, would you come up, please, Jackie? Uh do we have, we'll have to share the mic now.
And. We don't have, that's not. Just while she's coming up, certainly if someone. Certainly if someone called my office and asked whether or not the traffic expert was coming, your husband has emailed me numerous times. I was happy to respond that day right away. Um, we would be happy to provide that information. There's no obligation. It really is the public's responsibility. To have the witnesses ready, so.
So just for the record, uh because uh sometimes the, the, the voice uh record doesn't reflect what we all see here. So Jackie, could you give us your name, please, again?
Jackie Wenzel.
All right, and so, uh Jackie, uh you are planning to have a traffic expert?
Yes.
But is he or she or them, are they here tonight?
No, because every time they come, they're, they have a fee, and we don't have the deep pockets to.
All right, let's see if we could straighten this out. So uh, you know, sometimes in hearings, the applicant presents all witnesses. And then the objectors, uh the public has a right to bring in experts. In this particular case, uh it's, it's very clear to me that um it's critical for this application to have direction. On traffic, because as, as your witness and Ms. Krimko has indicated, the whole design. Will change based on a decision on traffic. Is that fair to say, Ms. Krimko? In other words, uh based on a.
The applicant, the design that's being submitted is what's being proposed now.
Okay.
Wait, it's layouts, and then there's no point in engineering.
Yes. That's, that's my point.
Details without knowing if the layout is working or not working.
The board suggested that something radically be changed. I'm not saying the board would.
As it relates to the ingress and egress?
Yes, that's correct, on the safety point of view.
Yes.
Then you wouldn't do your hard engineering until you had a comfort level of where the board was going, right? So isn't it fair to say that, that we need to hear from uh this other traffic expert? And then the board may have some more comments, like Dr. DiBenedetto as example. And then the board uh should give uh its feeling on what it feels should be. Uh the, the traffic layout, so that the applicant can take the next step.
That was a very loaded question, and I'm gonna try and answer it as best as I can.
Wasn't meant to be loaded, it's supposed to be helpful.
I know. It wa- it was, but I'm saying there were a lot of points to it, not loaded, I apologize. So I, I believe what you're asking is, before I go on. Rather than have the objectors wait until the end to present their testimony for their traffic expert. To allow their traffic expert to appear at the next meeting, or at least once we're done with Dan, and I expect we will. And normally, while that's outside of protocol, in light of the fact that this has been going on for as long as it has, I'm recognizing the cost. We're okay with that, provided that it's not going to be, once we prov-. If I agree to that, it's going to be presented once, we're not going to then have him come back again and come back ag-. Essentially, I, I don't wanna have this application become a back and forth, as you know. The, the presentation is supposed to be, we make our case, we conclude it, the objectors have the opportunity to state their objections. And then we have the opportunity to make changes or, or resubmit. So I just wanna understand that it's a courtesy.
If I may, 'cause I do a lot of this uh from the drawing side of it. It makes no sense on behalf of your client to go and engineer this whole thing. If someone's gonna produce a traffic expert that has a markedly different opinion than Mr. DiSario does.
If the board is.
And if he does, and it's valid, it may go back and forth. There's no guarantee that it won't. On the other hand. It may not happen. The, the expert may come in and agree.
Well, respect.
Until we hear.
Understood, but I guess my concern is that I think we're losing, we're losing um scope. From this board. I understand there may be a bad traffic situation here. Our obligation is not to make it better, under the ordinance and under the statute. So as long as we're all in the same frame of mind here as to our legal obligation and the board's authorization to review it. I understand everyone wants to make this better, but that isn't the obligation. That isn't what we're required to demonstrate. We have to provide safe access to and from our site, but the fact that Deal Road is busy now and will be busy afterwards is not a problem that the applicant is required to solve.
And Mr. Fitzgerald.
And I think we made that clear from ours at, at the last hearing. I, I put that on the record, that it's about safety issues.
I understand, but it, the public.
We don't have any idea what another expert is gonna say, and until we do, you can't take it apart and say, well, he can't come back and he, you have to listen to him.
And so while I know Dr. DiBenedetto would like six more lanes to make the bad situation better here.
You could put an overpass in.
Right, exactly, a bridge. We're not gonna propose that, so if. Certainly, we're open to hear about the, the layout of our site in a way which would make the ingress and egress of our site safer. Absolutely.
Okay, so uh you'll have your uh traffic expert, Jackie, at the next meeting?
Yeah, that, well, we were, we were told we were gonna be given a heads up on that, and then I had just heard through the grapevine that this may be the last meeting of your traffic expert. And I had emailed you, Mr. Kirk. You didn't email me back. I asked.
I've emailed you back every email you give.
Okay, in any event, this isn't, this isn't an open discussion. It was with regard to, will we extend the courtesy? The answer is yes, we'll extend the courtesy.
But isn't that the right thing to do?
Yes, it is. So Jackie, what you're gonna do is you're gonna, you're gonna bring your witness at the next meeting, and we're gonna proceed from there, okay?
Thank you.
All right, with that in mind, Ms. Krimko, uh it's eight thirty-five. Um we would normally open this up for comments, or actually, questions of the expert at this point.
Okay, a couple, a couple things before you get there, just in response to what was said. I don't know that I will be putting my traffic expert back on, so.
Yeah.
His test.
We should have questions.
His testimony may conclude this evening, so whatever questions there are should be made today. Now, I may wanna put him on to rebut something that the traffic expert asks, but.
Yeah, okay.
This, this is the final shot here for the traffic expert unless the applicant decides to put him back on.
Okay, uh now I think we should go back to any other questions from the board, understanding you're gonna hear another traffic expert next, next meeting. And then we can open it up to questions uh of this expert from the public. And, and just to be careful, I assume that there are no other proposed traffic experts by anybody else in the audience. Is that correct? I don't see anybody raising their hand, so we would expect to have. Yes. If you wanna make a, a statement or.
This is about you bringing in a traffic expert?
That, it's just limited to that one issue.
Olga Hanud, we are not bringing the experts individually, like the one uh you just asked, Jackie. It's not Jackie for herself that she's bringing the traffic expert. We, as a group of residents, we are retaining a traffic expert order two.
Okay, so who are those, uh who are the members of the public who are retaining uh the traffic expert?
Uh we gave the name of the attorney who was paying for.
Who's that?
Mister Cassidy is one of the.
Could I ask that we have them submit a list rather than take up the time of the hearing to provide the names? I think as long as you provide a list and confirm under oath at the next meeting that these are the people who hired the traffic expert, I think that should suffice.
Okay. I will provide that list to your firm or to.
I think you'd have to submit it to Mr. Kirk, and if you'd like to copy me, I'll give you my email address.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Mr. DeFigley has a question.
Okay, so, and, and I understand this is still a concept, but going back to the changes that have been solely made as we've gone through the urban jug handle. One of the things I noticed that is a big difference from the original plan to now is that in the original, before it was titled the urban jug handle. There were breaks that included stop signs. So if I was gonna come off Deal Road and make a right into the uh, to the property. Buy the retail outlets, not buy the residential, and then go up, there would be a stop line before I make the left to go back out. And then make the right onto thirty-five, which presented some opportunities for cars to slow down. And allow more pedestrian access from the residential side, from the neighborhoods around the area. Now that we have this jug handle, how are we ensuring pedestrian access isn't impeded by cars that are whipping around this? Is that a consideration?
That was part of.
That was part of my testimony earlier, where we would post it, we're contemplating posting it for twenty miles per hour, and there'll be signage and striping to reinforce that low speed around the entire jug handle.
And when you say signage, is that something that includes some of those flashing pedestrian signs? So if I'm, if I'm a pedestrian crossing at that upper corner, for instance, right? And I think that's the one that's probably the most concerned to me, from both an automobile and pedestrian standpoint, is there an opportunity to have a flashing light that a pedestrian could signal to have those cars? Or is that, I defer to some of my experts who might...
I mean, it can be, as long as the striping or signage or traffic control devices are in accordance with the manual and uniform traffic control devices, anything goes. So there's no reason that it couldn't be a more regu, or more attention-grabbing sign. If you notice, many towns now are putting on the stop signs with the red lights around them and different things to reinforce drivers' ability to see things when they're somewhat distracted.
Like I said, we're gonna meet with Bill, we're gonna take all his recommendations, we'll propose it all to the DOT, and we'll keep Bill in the loop as to what we can or can't do. But obviously, we have as much interest in the safe pedestrian access from the residential into the commercial.
Okay, one last question, so it's almost eight forty-five now. We don't know how many questions we're gonna have of the witness. Is it fair to say that you're not gonna present any other witnesses tonight?
No, that's not fair to say.
All right, so if you have more time, you'll present...
I do, I have two witnesses here with me tonight.
Okay, very good.
Two other witnesses, I should say.
All right.
Now we will open up this portion of the meeting to members of the general public that would like to cross-examine this particular witness only, and I mean only, on the testimony he gave. Thank you.
Excuse me, your name again?
It's Dan De Sario, you can call me Dan.
De Sario. Olga Hanut, twenty-sixth Meadows Lane. Mr. De Sario, in your first meeting, you indicated that you've been dealing with this project for a very long period of time, but you didn't specify, you just said that you used to have hair, and then you don't have hair, for the people that we don't know, and for the public.
I worked on the original application for this site when Stop and Shop was proposing.
That was what year?
Roughly two thousand.
Roughly two thousand, so about eighteen years you've been involved with this project.
Not contin...
Or no, continuously, but you originally with the Stop and Shop, and then you were, I guess, retained by the new developer.
Yes.
Correct? And you also testified that you don't live in town.
Yes.
At your first meeting, that's correct? Is your office or yourself, when you are involved as an expert witness, is your practice to get familiar with the town and the immediate adjacent area to the site that you are studying or presenting a traffic that is your...
I can figure it out.
That's what you do?
Yes.
Okay, how many times have you come to Ocean Township for this particular project?
For this particular site, over those fifteen years, over a hundred times?
Over a hundred times in eighteen years?
Yes.
Can I, I just want to clarify, the applicant, my first review letter was seven twenty-eight, two thousand three. So I was off by three, sorry.
Okay. Are you familiar with the immediate area, the corners of the intersection where this development is taking place, this proposed development is taking place?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the density of the west side versus the east side of this development? The immediate area, not all the way to Green Road, but let's say within the five-mile radius?
I don't know what you mean by density, but...
That there is, there is a lot of residents, highly populated, versus, the west side versus the east side?
Yes.
You are familiar?
Yes.
Okay, are you familiar with the Middlebrook Apartments?
Yes.
Are you familiar with how many apartments are in Middlebrook?
No.
Are you familiar, have you heard that there is nine hundred and sixteen apartments in Middlebrook?
If you say so, yes.
No, have you heard, have you, for this particular study?
No.
No. What about the Manor at West Side? Are you familiar with that development?
No.
Okay, are you familiar that there are two hundred and sixty-six units in that development? That is in the roller road?
Not familiar, no.
Are you familiar with Continental Gardens, and how many units are there?
No.
Are you familiar that there are two hundred and six units in Continental Gardens?
No.
Are you familiar with Coswell Development?
No.
The purpose is that there are three thousand five hundred and seventy-one units in the immediate area with residents. If there are two residents per unit, there are seven thousand one hundred and forty-two.
I have to place an objection for a couple of reasons. The first one is that you're offering testimony, facts that aren't in evidence, it's just a matter of questions. When you, I allowed you to ask as many questions as you wanted, now you're making a statement, which is not appropriate. And then, secondly, and more importantly, the number of residents or the density of bodies that are in Ocean Township are not relevant to a traffic report, as was submitted by Mr. De Sario. What is relevant is the amount of traffic that is on the road currently today, and the road that is forecast to be in there in the as-built condition. So, speaking about the sheer number of residents, you could be in a rural area that could be a cross-through between two towns that could have no residents on it at all, but have a tremendous amount of traffic, or you could be in an age-restricted area where nobody drives and have fewer. So again, the point was, I believe Mrs. Hanut made her point, that there are a lot of residences in that vicinity, we'll stipulate to that, but I'm not sure that there's anything past that.
Okay, the number of residents...
Hold on a minute. So, what I think I hear here is, you're making actually more commentary than you are asking questions of this witness regarding the particular testimony he gave this evening. And that's not what you're here for. You have to ask him questions regarding the particular testimony he gave. Now, what you're doing, I thought you were trying to lay a foundation to go somewhere, and that's what you're doing, just like a good lawyer. However, you can reserve that to the end of the hearing, when the public will be able to comment on everything. Because I know what you're trying to say is that there's a very dense population in the area, and there's going to be a lot of traffic on the road, but that should be held to the time that you have to give your public commentary. And this is not that time. So if you want to ask Mr. De Sario any questions you like about the testimony he gave, please proceed to do so, but this line of testimony can no longer go on, okay?
I understand. Somebody on the board was making a comment aloud, and it can be heard on the speaker, so I wanted to answer that. While I was posing the question, I don't know which one of the members were saying where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I did, that was me.
Okay. Are you familiar with the, for the, for your traffic study? Were you, are you familiar with the schools that they are in the immediate area of the site?
But again, the character of the area is not a question.
Right, we just went over this, Olga, we just went over this. What did you say, something about a school study?
No, I didn't say.
What did you say?
If he, if the expert is familiar with the schools that they are on the immediate vicinity of the site...
Again, you're going into areas where I told you that's, this is not the time for that. Would you like to ask him some questions about the testimony he gave? If not, then I'm gonna have to ask you to take a seat until you come back with some questions regarding the testimony he gave. Because you're going far outside the scope of what this particular portion of the hearing is about. And it can't allow you to go on like that any longer.
Respectfully, I will say that Ms. Krimko just said that now is our opportunity to ask all questions to the witness.
Regarding the testimony that he gave this evening.
Only this evening, or from the beginning?
Again, you can ask him traffic engineering testimonies with regard to his capacity as the traffic engineer, but by asking about the character of the area is not relevant to the testimony that he gave. If your question for him is, for example, do you take into consideration, when preparing an expert traffic opinion, the number of homes or the amount of schools in the area? That's a question as to how he made his study and how he made his conclusions. But just pointing out that there are schools and there are homes and that... If you believe, or your traffic engineer believes, that that's a factor that should be considered, well, your traffic engineer can offer that testimony.
Yeah, I think just to make it even clearer, the existing conditions are taken into account in the traffic counts that the traffic engineer has taken. Now, if there's something that's an approval that hasn't been constructed yet, he could be asked, did you take this into account in your projected traffic volumes? But the existing traffic is not gonna change because there are nine hundred units in Middlebrook Apartments, because the existing traffic takes that into account.
And those units were there as of nineteen seventy, because that was my first home on Rustic Drive.
Though even more importantly...
They've been there, they're not changing.
More importantly, there were counts taken at two times of the year. The two thousand sixteen counts were taken in the summer. And then I looked at that, and I said, that's not typical of what happens outside the summer, because I grew up in Asbury, I've been here all my life, and I find that the traffic in this area is really out of control in the summer of late. So, they agreed to a point, but certainly agreed to expand their counts and took more counts in January of this past year, January two thousand nineteen, making sure there were no school holidays or snow, you know, bad weather, or anything that would lessen the amount of traffic. And as it turned out, the summer counts from two thousand sixteen, which all of this is on record, were higher than the winter counts from two thousand nineteen. And I think what Mr. De Sario has testified to, if my recollection is correct, and I'm trying to just state facts that kind of go along with where you are exploring, is that that's what they're basing their analysis on, the higher of the two samples that they did take, and basing their design decisions on that to accommodate more traffic than less, based on their two samples.
With this new proposal, the study that you make, are you taking into consideration that before there were just pass-by traffic? Some people, they are not, are the people that otherwise had never stopped by the site, they just passed by, are going to be going into the development?
Yes, we've accounted for them.
You had accounted bypass traffic, not a new?
We've accounted for both pass-by and new traffic in our study.
And in your last update of May of two thousand nineteen, you have total vehicle actions supporting three seventy-three in and three forty-five out. There is a total of fourteen hundred and fifty-four vehicles, is that correct? The future trip generation estimate that you have, the in-and-out traffic. You have Route thirty-five through light, north to south, thirty percent of three seventy-three.
Oh, so for pass-by trips?
Correct.
Yes, there's three hundred and seventy-three total and peak hour pass-by trips, correct?
So, the thirty percent that you are calculating is one hundred and eleven cars, correct?
No, the pass-by trips that are contained in the future trip generation estimates table are the pass-by trips.
Thirty percent of the overall number of trips?
Correct.
Now, you only count once? Well, do you believe there are two actions, coming into the site and going out of the site? For the people that otherwise, which had just passed that side?
Most people that are coming to the site on the commercial end?
Correct.
So all the retail and the restaurants will come in as one trip, and then leave as another trip? So those are, those are two trips?
So you count twice, hundred and eleven and hundred and eleven point nine, correct?
I don't know what you're referring to in terms of the hundred and eleven and a hundred and eleven.
The thirty percent of the three seventy-three?
No.
That's not correct?
No. Going up to the top of that table, there's seven hundred and sixty-six total trips based on the trip estimates.
Correct.
You then adjust to account for internal trips? That would be made, as an example, between the residential and some of the retail?
Correct.
And then you adjust based on the pass-by trips, which are trips that would come from the traffic that's already on Deal or Route thirty-five? Taking off internal trips and pass-by trips give you the new traffic that would be attracted to the area as a result of this development?
Dan, I think one of the, one of the factors that may be confused, there's a distinction between number of trips, meaning into our site and off of our site, versus number of new vehicles that are gonna be on the road as a result of our project, correct?
Yes.
And I think that's what's being confused here. So each trip on and off our property was counted, correct?
Yes.
But some of those are pass-by trips, so they're gonna be on the roads anyway.
Correct.
So while they count as trips in and out of our property, they don't count as new cars on the road?
Correct.
Do you know if a vehicle is traveling on Deal Road, south to north, passing by the development, the proposed development, at fifty miles an hour? What is the time that it takes to the vehicle from Route thirty-five, from the intersection of Route thirty-five to the end of the development? Where you, what is the, the children's, right now, nursery, Children of America? Where you, where the, where the property ends, from Route thirty-five to the end of the property?
So you're not, she's saying north to south of thirty-five?
The distance?
South to north on thirty-five.
Yes. Yeah, me too, but the distance or the time it would take?
The time that will take, how many seconds from a car traveling at fifty miles an hour from thirty-five in the intersection of Deal Road to the end of your development, or the proposed development?
I don't know the answer to that, we'd have to calculate it.
Okay. Now that you have the urban jug handle, and the traffic will be slower, and you testify, actually, I'm gonna get balbaited on, but you testify to it. Because a member of the public asked you if you knew what, if there is gonna be a speed limit, and you indicated that you do not, correct? The speed limit that's gonna be imposed in the urban jug handle, you answered that you were not, you didn't know?
No, that's not what I testified to. We contemplate the urban jug handle would be posted for twenty miles per hour.
Today?
That's what I testified to.
She's saying at the last meeting, you didn't know what the impact was.
Correct.
Where did you get that information from?
The site engineer, as well as myself, consulted over that issue, and we feel that twenty miles per hour posting would be appropriate, again, subject to DOT review and approval.
Do you know who Ms. Antunes is in Ocean Township?
Can you say that again, please?
Do you know who Patrolman Alisa Antunes is?
I do not.
Okay. Do you know that she is the Traffic Safety Bureau in Ocean Township?
No.
No, okay. Do you know that she may have had the answer for that?
I have to object, she can't put... I have to object, she can't put into, it it's all hearsay, she can't say what that patrolman may or may not have said if. That patrolman wants to come testify or provide a report.
You would have to bring her in to testify, but this isn't the time for that anyway. As I've indicated to you previously.
Yeah, I'm trying to ask him about his testimony.
Right, you asked him if he knew and he said no, and then you proceeded to offer what she said and that's what I'm objecting to, you can ask.
I didn't say what she said. I asked him if he was familiar with this patrolman who is the. Traffic Safety Bureau in Ocean Township.
I don't know.
Okay. When you are computing, oh. You also testify that the internally are gonna be seven hundred and twenty trips internally. From the people of the townhomes. That was an answer to the question of the member of the public that lives in forty-eight called Indian Springs Road.
No.
Do you recall in the last meeting that you uh testify about that, that they are internally seven hundred and twenty trips? And you also made the comment that the people from the townhomes may wanted to go to Wawa. Do you recall your testimony about that?
I did not testify that there would be seven hundred and sixty-six.
What was the figure that you testified, the internal? Trips from the townhomes.
From the townhomes?
Yeah.
Five.
The total.
The internal trips from the townhouses would be five.
When you get a moment, can you revise your testimony at the hour of two twenty-one point forty? When you say about the trips, internal trips from the townhomes going into the convenience store?
The morning peak hour internal trips from the townhouses internally at the site are five. There are zero internal coming into any of the retail uses and there are five that are leaving attributed to the townhouses.
Excuse me, Olga. At this juncture, we're gonna take a five minute break and then you can come back and continue to uh.
Okay, that's fine.
Question the witness, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start again now, it's about nine fourteen. Um we're not gonna take any more uh testimony after nine forty-five as I announced in the beginning. But you can proceed.
Could you please explain to the public and to the board, what do you mean by doesn't? Go to our operations, what exactly means you mean by that term, our operations?
What was that first part, I'm sorry?
Can you explain to the public and to the board? What do you mean by when you say that doesn't fit in our operations? You say that twice.
That doesn't fit into our?
Yeah, it's not verbatim, but that doesn't go to our operations. What operations means when you are referring to the traffic inside the development?
I don't know the context with which you're pulling that statement out.
The. I believe it was Mister Scott or the gentleman who lives at forty-eight called Indian Springs Road. He was asking you if it relates, how relates the bypass trips. To the existing or or to the new traffic. And you say that doesn't go to our operations, you say twice, you testified twice.
So in terms of traffic impact and changes to traffic operations, pass by traffic doesn't bring any new traffic to an area. So pass by traffic will not change any area traffic operations. The higher the pass by traffic, the better it is from a land use and traffic perspective.
Correct. Have you participated or do any traffic study with the bypass traffic? To for the developer to do a pitch to the proposed uh tenants?
Again, I don't understand the question, but pass by traffic as estimated is based on published trip rates, so we've accounted for pass by traffic.
Have you participated in any study? Where all the traffic that bypassed the site? Has been given to the developer to make a pitch to the uh new tenants or the proposed new tenants?
No.
The you you testified that the new bank, they added to the bank at the the last time. That was not there. Correct?
Yes.
You say that there is no significant impact in the traffic.
Correct.
Do you have a calculation already here on the table that there is a twelve percent increase of traffic? With that particular use added to the site?
I don't know what the exact percentage is, but again. Adding a bank to this proposed development, it's not gonna significantly change uh any conclusions with respect to traffic.
Can you point out in the table where exactly is the percentage? You s- you did this calculation after the bank.
I don't have that percentage increase calculation. Um what we did with this supplemental analysis that you referred to uh earlier. Is the new development program as contemplated by that concept plan. We went and did a brand new traffic analysis and accounted for everything that's part of that development.
But you don't have the added percentage of that particular use into the the proposed development?
No.
Are you gonna have that percentage for the next meeting?
It's really not relevant to anything I testified to. If the board would like to see what the percentage increase is, we could provide it.
What about if the public wanted to know? For safety reasons.
In terms of safety reasons, safety goes to the design of the access and the circulation and. Nothing has changed with respect to those aspects of the application.
And the ro- uh you think that that is relevant to the roads around this proposed development, not just to the in and out? The egress and ingo- egress for the safety of the public, you don't think that is relevant?
That is correct.
Is not, is irrelevant?
Is not relevant.
The twenty miles an hour that you testify, that's gonna be the traffic. Uh regulation now in the uh urban jug handle.
What is contemplated, yes.
What is contemplated, correct? Is that going to be stipulated on the? There's gonna be a written agreement agreement that you say, that the DOT will require. To have it in writing, is that also going to have established the how many miles per hour? Is going to have? The public have to obey by in that the urban jug handle?
Yes.
Is gonna be stipulated on the agreement?
Or whatever form it will be stipulated to, could be on the approved plans, it could be uh part of the agreement or both, not sure.
Once that established, are you gonna recalculate the traffic impact that will have? Now that the vehicles that normally will have travel at fifty miles an hour passing the site. Now that they need to do that urban jug handle at twenty miles an hour. Have you calculate calculated that impact on coming into Deal Road?
We've accounted for the traffic that would use the urban jug handle, yes.
That was not my question. We, you already had calculated that traffic before in your prior study.
And the current, and the current study, yes.
And the current study. Originally was not the urban jug handle, now we have an urban, an urban jug handle. At the prior meeting, you didn't have the speed of which the. Uh vehicles have to travel, now we have, you have established at twenty miles an hour. So now the traffic is gonna move slower into that. Uh urban jug handle, is that gonna have any impact? Into?
The traffic is not gonna move slower because of the urban jug handle. What we previously proposed was a far side jug handle at the corner. This board and I think some of the public indicated that that wasn't a desirous design. So we took those comments to heart and we changed our design to create what is now coined an urban jug handle. And incorporated into the overall site design. We've accounted for the traffic that would use the urban jug handle. Not only the traffic for the site itself, but the other traffic not associated with the site. That's what this current analysis has accounted for and my testimony is as previous.
Correct. The traffic. The vehicles traveling in a regular jug handle, in the existing jug handle. Uh and the vehicles traveling in the urban jug handle at different speed. You don't think that that has an impact on the?
No.
The slower movement is not going.
Mister Chair, she asked and answered the question four different ways and his response was no each time. I'd ask if we could move on to the next question.
I think she's moving on to the next question.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh you indicated also that you are going to propose the DOT for some speed bombs and some other calming devices. Is that going to be done for the next meeting?
We are going to, in collaboration with the board's professionals as well as DOT. Design the urban jug handle in terms of those kinds of details. What eventually will be part of that design, I can't tell you. And for the next meeting, the answer is no, we won't have that level of detail.
When would you cover that?
I don't know.
What was the reason for moving the eighty feet towards east, the entrance to the development?
There was a desire to keep all of the commercial on the inside of the urban jug handle.
Was to separate, you're saying to separate the townhomes from the. Restaurants, was that the the reason or was to improve traffic safety?
No, if you recall the last concept plan with the urban jug handle, there was a building, I believe it was Building B. That was on the east side of the jug handle, so we had buildings on both sides. And it was a a desire to keep all the buildings within the inside of that jug handle. In the southwest quadrant of the site. Yes, it was.
Was that? The desire for to separate the two? Uses or for the public safety, what was it?
I made the recommendation because when I looked at the plan and listened to the presentation. I thought that it would minimize um the conflicts. Between driveways serving individual users on the site, pads if you wanna call it that. And and uh and the urban jug handle and and in fact it did. And so now you can kind of travel around on the site, this whole southwest quadrant, if you will, from one pad to another. Without ever crossing or intersecting with that urban jug handle, so it was a, I mean I. The intersections are not necessarily unsafe. But it's certain, in my opinion, fewer intersections is a safer situation. So I thought that for the commercial users that are circulating. And and by the way, the the parking also now in that cluster is more efficient. It's a lot easier to park your car in one spot a- and walk to two different uses if that's what you wanted to do, as opposed to driving. From one use to another and having to cross the urban drug handle with your vehicle to do it. So that was why I made the recommendation, just made more sense to me. Plus, it it pretty much isolated. All of the commercial, certainly a good portion of it, uh from the residential.
It makes sense. I just wanna go back to the table and your testimony a few minutes ago. You say seven uh. The in and out inside the development, the table number two. You say you gave me a number of seven vehicles per hour?
You specifically asked me, what are the internal trips for the townhouses?
Correct.
And I told you, in the morning peak hour, there's zero coming in and five going out for the townhouses.
In the AM?
Correct.
In the PM, the total are twenty-six.
For the townhouses.
And in the Saturday peak hour, thirty.
Correct.
So out of the. Seventy homes, only twenty-six in and out total on peak hour, is that correct?
For the townhouses. Let me answer the question, please. If you look at the townhouses. The morning peak hour, you'll see eight trips come in and twenty-six trips go out. Some of them will be internal to the site. The rest will be external.
And that number, you say zero? That you have zero going in in the AM?
For internal trips.
Yeah.
Correct.
Going into the townhomes.
Correct.
Correct, zero.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other people in the general public that would like to examine Mister Disario, is it?
Yes.
Hi, could you give your name and address, please?
Diane Sormont, uh one ninety-two Oakhurst Road.
Okay.
Um I see the advantages of the urban jug handle, um but my main concern is safety of bikers and walkers. And I think the town has done an admirable job in the last few years of putting in bike paths and.
Chair, Mister. I'd have to object, this is just questions only, comments will be at the end of the presentation.
How um how are you going to ensure the safety of bikers?
We don't ensure the safety of bikers or pedestrians or people driving the cars. What we do is we put forth designs that are consistent with the design standards that govern those designs. So if you look at the plan, there was a revision that was made where there's a bike path now that is along the Deal Road. Side of the project.
And the bike path extends to the highway intersection, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was in direct response to a comment that one of the board members had made very early on.
Okay, I I'm just curious about the decision to put the. Uh the urban on the inside, the stores on the inside, if they were on the outside, it seems like they could be integrated more. Into the town where people would be able to walk and access them from the park. I was just wondering about that decision. I I'm not being critical, I'm just curious.
No, understood. The site is connected to the park by the pedestrian ways that exist. So if you wanted to come through the park, you could come through the library site, or you could walk along Deal Road. And you would be able to be on pedestrian ways, whether they're sidewalks or otherwise, to get from the park to the site.
Okay.
And Dan, just to further the question. The reason why it was switched, we did have the jug handle on the inside and everything else around it. That was changed based on the boards and the public's concern as to the safety of the traffic conflicts. Traveling on the roadways, correct?
Correct.
If you think about it, the original far side jug handle that we was a subject of a lot of discussion two meetings ago. That's totally on the inside.
Right.
This is totally on the outside, anything else goes through it and that's a lot of conflict, so it's it's it's.
I I see the advantages, I would just, but from my perspective as a biker and a walker, I I feel like. We just take our lives in our hands.
But there's, there was no. E- even, okay, I I I understand where you're going, but even with the. Far side jug handle concept, there was still a route. Around or through, it actually was through.
Okay.
And and you would have to cross that.
Something.
So there's, thi- this actually has three, it's on this, and it's a concept, but it's got three intersections. Uh where there are pedestrian crossings and they're kind of evenly split, so it's pretty easy. So it's pretty easy to walk from either one of the two uh easternmost to the park. And then we have, then there's also the path, uh that, the multi-use path that's, that's a little wider and gonna be all along Deal Road and that could accommodate. So I, I think that wasn't on the original plan, that was, I think Jennifer just mentioned a couple minutes ago to your, to respond to some question you had that, that you know, that was something they were willing to do also to accommodate bikers and-
The big safety concern, and I don't know if you were at the meeting or not, just by, one of the concerns with the far side jug handle, the internal one, was people walking down Deal Road or across the highway going to the bus stop would be forced to cross, would be forced to go across the entrance into the jug handle.
I see, okay.
So at the recommendation, I think it was Dr. Vendetta, was by making this, the far side and getting rid of that, it enabled now pedestrians to safely access the uh bus stop. That was the testimony at the last meeting.
Okay, okay, I just, um, you know, wanna make sure that we're trying to keep the pedestrians and the bikers safe.
Absolutely, thank you.
Hi, Anne Foster, nine ten Berkeley Avenue.
Hi.
Um, I wanted to ask, I think you may have answered this, but uh the northbound lane on Route thirty-five has a right turn dedicated lane into the development, right?
It's, the answer is yes. It's gonna be extended from the existing lane that comes off that far side jug handle. So if you're going east Deal Road and you wanna get Route thirty-five northbound-
If you're heading northbound on Route thirty-five, there's two lanes right now. There's going to be a third dedicated lane into the development.
That extends from the jug handle all the way up
To Deal Road.
Across our site frontage.
Right.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now that turns into the um urban jug handle road.
Yes.
Okay, which is one lane in each direction.
Correct.
Okay, so what is the plan if there's an emergency incident on that jug handle? For instance, a traffic accident, fire, there needs to be emergency vehicles brought in. Where does the traffic go now that it's kind of stuck in this jug handle? Now it's backing up onto Route thirty-five? Like what, what's the plan for that management of that traffic and that in, that issue?
Well, as you can see from the plan, there are multiple uh connections along the jug handle. So there will be several paths with which somebody could uh snake their way through the parking areas in an emergency situation.
In that type of situation.
Correct, and-
So Dan, in a regular scenario like the far side jug handle, it's usually just in one direction, right?
Yeah, usually jug handles are one, right, usually jug handles are one lane.
Right, so this will have more traffic, say, than the one that's at BJ's?
Right, but understand, this is a two-lane
Yes.
jug handle. So if one direction was blocked, you still have the ability to get around that blockage because you have the other lane.
Okay, so then with the pedestrian crosswalks, is there going to be like um like a relief in the middle? So you're trying to cross two lanes of traffic, is there going, if you're trying to come, say, from, from the development to the Wawa and you're crossing the jug handle road, is there a, like, you know, some intersections have like a, an island in the middle where you can stop and then get across the other lane?
There won't be any center islands in the middle of the jug handle.
You gotta get across the two.
Correct.
Okay. That sounds, um, I have one other question.
And well, well, she's looking, something, cause this might be of interest. Do, do you have a projection, I don't remember, uh of how many cars in a peak hour would utilize that as a, as a jug handle?
As a jug handle? Uh it's on the order of about a hundred to a hundred and twenty. It's about one every minute, two every minute on that order, not a lot.
Okay, um, and then I wanted to ask, because the last um rendering was with the internal jug handle, far side jug handle, that had a large catch basin, like a landscaped kind of thing, that Mr. Lang had presented a lot of information on. Is there any way to show like an overlay of the old plan with the new plan to see exactly what was?
We don't have the engineering done yet.
Ah.
So, no, because we don't-
So that, so this isn't-
This is just a concept plan as to layout and traffic and placement of buildings.
Well, now what she's asking can delay the old layout over-
I think she was asking about the basin and-
Well, I assumed, I, I didn't realize this was a preliminary and not a final plan.
Well, the basins, I mean, the basins, wherever they fall on this, they have to meet state standards. I mean, state and municipal standards are identical, they have to be met, there's just no grace at all.
Right, but I think this plan has one more building
Yeah.
and the associated um blacktop parking
Correct.
than the old one did.
Correct.
Based on what I'm looking at, the, I think it's called a drainage gar- a rain garden on that illustration, looks much smaller to me than the original-
But the overall, there, there's nine, if I remember correctly, or very close to that. And, and some of them are As and Bs. Stormwater management installation, some are rain gardens, some are bio-retention, some are underground storage. There, there's plenty of, of storm drain management. This will be different, cause as you say, it's a, number one, it's a different layout, but number two, there's also some more impervious cover, no question. However, however they do it, they, they, the end result, impact on the brook i- is, is defined by the state statute, which is adopted by the municipality as its statute, they're identical. So th- there's just no choice, they have to make it-
Right, they have to meet a minimum standard, but my question is the change from what was previously presented and- so what the actual-
We don't have it designed yet, but what I can tell you is I think the differences between a basin that you can see as opposed to what solutions are gonna be proposed underground or what's gonna be expanded, but that has not been submitted yet.
Okay, so yet to come on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jackie, Jackie, could you let this lady there, she was, since she hasn't been up before? Come on up.
Thank you. I'm Joan Bersansky, twenty-eight hundred Logan Road. And I've um been in Florida for the winter, so I'm a breath of fresh air, I hope. I um, I'm appalled and um, um quite upset about all of this, but that's beside the point and I'll address my question to you. We're concerned about traffic patterns on Deal Road, which will eventually go down to one lane, I'm presuming. The two lanes that are near the development will again go down to one lane as it proceeds east. And in order to be kinder and nicer people, I'm wondering why, and I'm so glad to hear this is in a conceptual stage and not in a final stage, have you considered, and I know you have, the fact that we already have a bank and a fast food store and a gas station heading west on Deal Road? And so my question for your person, in order to alleviate this traffic congestion on Deal Road and and on Logan Road as well, have you considered placing your entrance to the commercial uh entities on thirty-five North where your owner of your land would be insured much more business? People travel thirty-five uh North quite a bit, we all know that. There is no gas station, there is no fast food, there is no um bank.
Let me just answer your question. Yes, we have driveways on thirty-five.
So I'm not a breath of fresh air, all right.
You're still a breath of fresh air, but we do have driveways on thirty-five, yeah.
Um, but the commercial end of this is going to be fronting on Deal Road, am I correct?
That's not correct.
That is not correct.
If you look at the drawing and Jeremy can, can show you, the commercial is fronting on thirty-five and there's an entrance on and off from thirty-five. The urban jug handle goes around the commercial.
All right, but there is still an entrance to these commercial places off Deal Road?
Correct.
All right, so my concept would be to have an entrance to the um residential area off Deal Road, which would alleviate the uh traffic and uh the lane congestion which already exists and, and nicely for the people living there and for us, yes.
Well, I'm just saying, that sounded more like a comment than a question for the expert.
It did. I'll give you that.
Is there a question for the expert?
Yes, the question was, if you're looking to alleviate traffic uh congestion on Deal Road and, well, you're not. We are, we are, I'm sorry.
Understood, but just if you weren't here for some of the prior meetings,
Yes.
the property is zoned for what's being proposed, there were probably three meetings where Mr. Lang went through all of the analysis and indicated that we either meet or exceed all of the requirements that relates to the intensity or the density of this project. So the amount of traffic on Deal Road or on Route thirty-five is not one of the proofs that's the applicant's responsibility. The proof of the applicant's responsibility is the safety of the ingress and egress and the movements as they relate to the project. So it is not the applicant's position to alleviate traffic on Deal Road. It's the applicant's responsibility to not create an unsafe situation coming to and from the property.
And in good conscience would be the other end of that, which should be everyone's consideration today. Yes, and I take your objection, I take your objection.
Right.
Yes.
Ma'am, you're giving commentary, okay, you can come back, uh give commentary when commentary will be taken. Anyone else in the audience? Dennis?
Dennis Howlett, sixteen thirty-eight Holbrook Street. I have a, a quick question, I hope I do it right this time. Do you have a projection? I try. Do you have a projection for what type of foot traffic you're gonna uh see, for instance, at the Wawa?
I do not, no.
Yeah, there's, so there's no projection for that at all?
No, sir.
Is there a projection for the amount of bike traffic you might see inside the?
No.
Uh would that come under a, a different expert or a different?
The trips that we've estimated, assume everyone's coming by car to put forth a conservative analysis.
Oh, I'm nonplussed on that. Uh I'm, I'm, I'm actually gonna ask, I was going to ask a question about uh safety, because the Little League Field is right down Logan Road. This is gonna be attractive for the kids to come, instead of using their own concession stand, come to the Wawa to get something to eat. And a lot of them will be white, walking or riding a bike, I would imagine, so. Just, if there's no consideration, and that's not part of your testimony, then I guess I'm done. I'm done.
Thank you.
Jackie?
Hi, the last time you were here, we um, we were talking about the jug handle and the entrance. So the entrance now on thirty-five is one, there's one entrance, it's at the far end that connects to the urban jug handle?
We still have a right and right out driveway on thirty-five that is part of the urban jug handle.
That's the jug, so that's the only entrance into the site, cause we're, my concern was revving up on the, when I come out of the jug handle, heading north on thirty-five and I'm in the acceleration lane. What we and the planning board had been concerned about is that as I'm trying to go fast to get into the middle lane-
It's the only entrance to the site on thirty-five.
Is the urban jug handle?
Correct.
And, and so that's like, at that point, we'd be into the traffic?
Correct.
Okay, all right. The other thing was you had, the last time I asked you, had you considered your traffic pattern in terms of visits to the site based on a general fast food versus a Chick-fil-A? Given the time now in between meetings, did you do more research on the Chick-fil-A and did you consider that within? Cause it's a, it's a special type of condition?
No.
Okay, and then I understand Ms. Crimco had said that you're not here to make our traffic condition better, just safe. But it seems quite logical that there's gonna be an intense increase in traffic because right now there are trees there, they don't drive. So the amount of activity there is absolutely going to impact our traffic. So how are you going to alleviate that?
Jack, you're making a comment, I don't think he is here to alleviate that.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, a question is how are, I understand we're not concerned about making it
What's the question?
Better, they can't make our traffic better, it's not, Ms. Crimco said it's not their role or responsibility to make it better. But they are clearly going to make it worse, and if not, how are you going to keep it the same?
What the applicant has put forth is an improvements package, one of which is required by the zoning, which is the far side jug handle. That has now taken a form of an urban jug handle in direct response to comments made by the planning board as well as some comments from the public. In addition, over and above that requirement, the applicant is making other improvements along Deal Road. They are widening Deal Road along the, almost the entire frontage to provide an additional lane, which will terminate at the Route thirty-five intersection as a right turn lane. That improvement in and of itself will improve traffic operations along Deal Road. Now by virtue of providing the urban jug handle, we're also eliminating people coming north on thirty-five from going down the nearside jug handle and then trying to make a left turn into Deal Road, especially when it's congested in that left turn lane and the through lanes are all backed up and you get people trying to cut in. So from an overall traffic perspective, this proposal, regardless of whether there's trees or not, is better from a traffic impact perspective than, because of the improvements that the applicant is proposing.
More cars doesn't necessarily mean worse traffic.
Correct, and I will point out that the largest traffic generator on this site in terms of an individual land use is the convenience store with gas. And most of its activity is gonna come from traffic that's already on Route thirty-five and Deal Road.
I understand the extra lane would alleviate the traffic we have now, but you're bringing so many more people to that site. Like if we had that urban jug handle now with, through the park.
You're making a statement, I'd ask you to just, if you have a question for his testimony, please just ask him.
Um, okay, well, he didn't, I, I mean, my question was, did he redo the study with the Chick-fil-A, so?
And I said no.
So then the numbers are not really accurate, I would say.
Oh, they absolutely are accurate.
But how can they be if you didn't consider the, the Chick-fil-A? Uh Chick-fil-A in most places, so many towns, you can Google it.
You asked the question, I will answer.
Traffic guards.
I will answer your question. A Chick-fil-A is a fast food restaurant? We're obligated to estimate traffic based on fast food restaurant trip rates. That's what we've done in this study.
But we know this is a special condition.
I have to make an objection, we don't know anything if Jackie went into the objectors opportunity wants to present testimony, which is subject to cross-examination, to demonstrate this or perhaps a traffic expert-
I sustain that because, because when you bring your expert, if he can incorporate that into his uh report, that would be fine, but you really have-
I would ask if her expert is going to be providing any kind of report that the same as would be required by the applicant, it would be required to be submitted and on file and is in advance of any hearing?
Sure, that, that was something also, do you get the, all of your plans ten days before? What you do?
You have to talk to Ron about that.
My law requires to submit everything in advance.
Our office receives them ten days prior.
So everything this evening that was reviewed, they all read ten days before, is that true?
It was in our office ten days before, that does not mean they received it ten days before.
Well, did they know it was in your office?
Yes, the law, it's the law.
I know, but they should read it ahead of time so they're prepared when they're here, no?
There's no legal requirement that the board members do anything other than show up to the hearing and listen to the testimony. Obviously, most of the board members choose to review the documents in advance, but the requirement is incumbent, it's incumbent upon the applicant to get it in ten days in advance. One, to allow the board's professionals the opportunity to review and write reports. And two, more importantly, the reason for it is to allow the public the opportunity to come in and review it.
No, I know, it's just that we rely as the public on the planning board to give us, to, to have an expert point of view.
Do you have any, do you have any questions from Mister D'Zario?
Um, yeah, I think I covered them. Oh, I know, I do have one more. Um, on the, the developer's site, uh and, and we've all viewed it, there's an animation of how the traffic's gonna run and the animation has about five cars on it. Is it possible?
I have to object, at the first meeting, we made it very clear that the animation was in no way reflective of the anticipated traffic, that it was-
That wasn't my question.
You made a statement, because again-
I was leading up to my question.
Well, your leading question made a statement that's inaccurate and I feel compelled to correct, that the animation that was shown at the hearing and moved into evidence, there was ample testimony, it was in no way reflective of the anticipated traffic or the traffic counts that Mister D'Zario did.
No, I know, I was just trying to remind everyone, if they look on site, there is an animation. It doesn't honestly reflect it.
Again, this is not your opportunity to remind the public that there's an animation. This is your opportunity to ask a question. This is your opportunity to ask a question to the traffic engineer.
Will you be able to make an animation based on your report that we can really see what, how it's going to move to make us all feel more comfortable?
No.
You won't do it? You're not required to do it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in the general public have a question? Mr. Sharp?
Scott Sharp, OAL.
Hi.
I'm going to have to use this because I did not receive the report from the last meeting. I think you know that, Mr. Varelli.
I was unaware, sir.
That I did not receive it.
How would Mr. Varelli know anything about what Mr. Sharp did or did not receive?
At the last meeting, Ms. Krimko, listen to my whole statement. Don't interrupt me, okay?
I didn't interrupt you, Mr. Sharp. I asked a question to Mr. Varelli. And I'm only speaking to Mr. Varelli, Mr. Varelli.
Mr. Sharp can remind me. Go ahead, Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Varelli, at the last meeting, we had a discussion regarding the availability of the traffic report from the Krimko traffic expert. And I had not been able to receive that at that meeting or before the meeting because it was unavailable in the office of Mr. Kirk. Ms. Krimko, in all of her generosity, offered to send me that report by email. And I would not like to put myself directly in contact with Ms. Krimko or her firm. So, the agreement at that meeting was that, and it was agreed between yourself and Mr. Kirk.
And you would pick it up from Mr. Kirk, right?
That she would provide that report to Mr. Kirk the very next day and Mr. Kirk would send it to me. I'm still waiting. I'm just being very, very specific.
Okay.
And you can look at that. So.
But now you've agreed with Mr. Kirk, you're going to pick it up?
He handed me a hard copy. I was going to receive it by electronic copy because then I can share it with other people who might be interested.
And Mr. Varelli, just for the record, we did immediately submit all of the traffic reports via email to Mr. Kirk's office, if not the next day, then the following day.
And I didn't reply, imply that Ms. Krimko did not do that.
Did you inquire of the, did you come down?
I sent, I sent Mr. Kirk an email that was regarding to this upcoming meeting. So, I assume that you all follow your rules.
Mr. Kirk did not receive that email.
And I'm asking, did you, did you at the last meeting?
And how long ago? Was that about a month ago?
That doesn't matter. The point is this board made, this board made a commitment at that meeting on the record to provide the document. That's all. I shouldn't have to follow up and make those kind of requests.
Why not?
Mr. Varelli, do you agree?
He doesn't have to respond to that.
I'm fortunate that this occurred, sir.
Thank you.
But hopefully it'll be rectified now. So, now I will. Been forthcoming. That's only my point. Are you ready to proceed with your questions?
I'm ready to ask a couple of questions.
Because this is just for questions now. Thank you.
Yes, I understand that. And so, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage. But I'm trying to understand, because you did not actually brief this portion of the presentation in today's testimony, but I'm trying to understand, is this a walkway? This dotted? Because I don't have anything.
Yes.
Okay. And so, a pedestrian coming that way or is there also a pedestrian path here?
Yes.
And is there a crosswalk at this point?
There will be, yes.
It's not indicated on this drawing, though, this being a preparatory.
It is indicated, but there's a lot of line work in that area.
Okay, all right. So, this is intended to go to get you to the corner. A pedestrian coming this way or a bike person must cross this. Is there any sort of protective stop device at this crossing in order for that person or senior citizen to get all the way across with these two-way, two-lane road? So, there, it's just a matter of, is there a town, no, that'd be for the engineer. That there's a, a stop for pedestrians would be the best for the traffic at that, on that road? They have to, they should stop for pedestrians. Is that the?
The law is if a pedestrian's in a crosswalk, you must come to a stop.
Okay, good. So, and I guess on this urban jug handle, does this have to be approved by the, you said you mentioned DOT several times. Do they approve this design of the urban jug handle?
Yes.
Okay, so that's confirmed. Who has, whenever they do that, is, do they have the, who provides the enforcement of the 20 mile per hour speed limit?
Township.
The township. So, that's an additional responsibility to maintain 20 miles per hour and stopping for pedestrians or bike safety aspects, crossing, especially this one, which has to cross. And then you're crossing the access to the bank drive-through. And I'm not sure what all's going on in here. This is access here. And so, you have several places where there's crosswalks. If that's where, that's what these all indicate?
Yes.
Okay. But nowhere on this site will we have access for, will we have, I guess, in some places, it's a push, you push a button to turn on a light to help the pedestrian across, pause the traffic.
That's not contemplated right now, no, sir.
Is there any sort of DOT regulation to do something like that? I know in other towns that I've lived in, they have that.
That is something that will be part of the process for detailing the design of the urban jug handle.
Okay. And when do you anticipate going to DOT for this review of this design? And for when they will make a review and an assessment?
We've already talked to DOT about the urban jug handle. In fact, it was right after the first meeting that I appeared and presented testimony. Their indications were they were favorable towards the urban jug handle. When we resubmit to them as part of our ongoing review process, we will have more detailed design.
When will that be?
I think we are obligated to resubmit to them in about 45 days, but don't quote me on that.
From now or from then?
From now.
From now, 45 days.
Yes.
And then they have a review process and then you're, and they get back to you with either questions, clarifications, approval, or denial.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Apologize, Mr. Varelli, for the disagreement we have, but sometimes I believe in organizations doing what they say.
Thank you anyway, sir. And thank you for your questions. Very pertinent. Okay, will somebody make a motion to close the public portion of this meeting?
So, move.
Before we conclude tonight, let's just clarify for the members of the public especially, our time sequence. So, Mr. Kirk, the next regular meeting.
Well, I have brought up, I have made requests since the last meeting that the board consider special. We've been very fortunate that it's been light agendas and the board has been gracious in giving us more time. But obviously, it's in the public's interest and our interest to get this done. So, we requested publics, I'm sorry, private, specials. Public, private, specials.
No private.
We requested special meetings, so I just am waiting to hear back from Ron about it.
We've spoken to the board and the board is willing to have a second meeting each month with the exception of August.
So.
Dates to be determined because we don't have them presently.
So, for right now, we'll have to schedule this for the next regular meeting. And Amy, when's the next regular meeting? June 24th. For those in the back, especially if you didn't hear, what Ms. Krimko is indicating is that on behalf of the applicant, she has made some requests for what are called special meetings. And Mr. Kirk has generally indicated that that may be acceptable, but it has to be followed up on. Now, if the board is going to meet, other than the next regular meeting, Ms. Krimko has an obligation to send a notice.
If it's before the next regular meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
And just one thing that wasn't clear before we jumped into this, Mr. Varelli, my intention was to finish up with Mr. DiSario. So, if there's only one more, one or two more people with questions, I'd ask if the board would entertain letting us finish rather than bring him back just to ask one or two more questions.
Board members? Give her some courtesy. Does anyone else have any more questions out there for this particular? The board?
There is never, there is no procedure to ask the board, Sandy. Sandy, I need you to hear this. The question was when they can ask questions to the board. And the response is the applicant, as was stated at the beginning, when the applicant presents the testimony, the public has the opportunity to ask questions of those witnesses. And then the public has the opportunity to do the same and make a presentation. There is not a scenario where it's a public question and answer with the board.
That's correct.
Does the board not hold its public regular meetings without witnesses, without the specific issue? So, that we have, other than writing to you, we have no access to you directly in a public setting?
Well, just conceptually, a lot of people are familiar with going to the township council meetings. And based on statute, that is a different type of forum. The analogy that I have, this is like a trial. So, as Ms. Krimko correctly indicated, it's under the municipal land use law. The process is as she indicated, just as you wouldn't have the opportunity to ask, you know, a judge, a judge a question from the audience. Maybe that's not the perfect analogy, but the process is just to present your witnesses. The board, which is somewhat like a jury, listens to the testimony. But there's no direct dialogue from the public directed to the board directly.
Is that what you're saying, sir? Ever? What Ms. Krimko indicated is the process.
I would, I would think, and just in some other municipalities, if I may.
Sure.
In some instances, for example, if you wrote a letter to the board, the board could put it on the agenda for discussion and you could come. The question and answer is not part of an, you can't do it as part of an applicant's presentation. But certainly, you could request to be heard by the board and it would be up to the board chairman's discretion whether or not to entertain it. And then, secondly, I don't know whether or not you allow any colloquy during the workshop because I don't usually attend them. Sometimes in the council, they allow it.
I mean, are you asking about this particular proceeding for that kind of dialogue or just outside of this particular application?
My questions are again procedural in terms of how they've gone on during this particular meeting, these hearings, is how the board has comported itself and how council has been allowed to comport herself in terms of what questions may be asked of the witness, when meetings will be held. I thought all those things were within the purview of the board, not within the applicant's counsel. And that's what I've heard tonight. That's why I asked the question. Who runs the thing? With all the respect, Ms. Krimko is a very nice person, but who runs this thing? Is it she or is it the board or was appointed by the council for this purpose? Yes?
Well, the general process is that the applicant presents its witnesses. And if there are questions by members of the public, then after the witness is completed, then the questions take place. So, I mean, a lot of people have different interpretations of what happens, but that, you know, some people, I don't know if you're upset by Ms. Krimko's actions, but she's doing a proper job.
I take umbrage with them, only from a procedural point of view. I'm not upset with her at all.
Okay, well, that's good to clear up.
There's no animus whatsoever.
No, well, from my.
I'm an old hippie. I used to have hair, too.
Yeah. Oh, okay. All right.
So, I have to go to the town council in order to ask questions about the process and procedures of this board. Is that correct? I didn't know if I was allowed to ask the question on the record, so that's why I did it from the chair. So, in order to ask procedural questions about how the board comports itself, I'm not allowed to ask within this procedure with the witness as indicated by council. I must, if I interpreted, I don't know who's chairing at this point. I don't know if it's this gentleman or this gentleman. But I'm not allowed to ask, or not I, just the public's not allowed to ask questions directly of the board as to how they proceed unless I go to the council meeting.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Could you please state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't asked. David Weiner.
I'm asking you.
12, I'm going to answer you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. David Weiner, 1216 Walnut Avenue, Wanamasa. Right next to the golf course. 34 years and I don't golf. Thank you.
Me either.
It's boring.
I'm on the same page with you, sir.
Thank you. So, is that, I don't know who's going to answer the question, but is that my, in a public's only venue, is to go to the council meeting to ask questions as to how this board comports itself, sessions and proceedings as this? That's my question. I don't think it's a difficult one.
I think that would be a good place to start. Where the members of this board are basically here to hear the presentation of the applicant and make a decision.
So, you're not here to hear the concerns?
Well, no, not exactly.
I didn't finish the question.
Okay, but you'll have an opportunity to voice your concerns at the very end of the application when public commentary will be allowed. And there'll be a session for that.
Okay, except that if the procedures were deemed by someone in the public, one or more, to be inequitable or not appropriate, then asking those questions at that point would be too late, wouldn't it?
The grounds, they've given a lot of leeway with the public asking questions and stepping in and procedural and commenting. Generally speaking, none of that should have gone on, but the board has extended courtesies and allowed a lot of discussion that in most municipalities, the board chairman would have been hitting the gavel saying, you're not allowed to speak. It's not your turn. So, essentially, at the end, when it's your public portion, if you're upset about the process or you think that it was inequitable, that's your opportunity to state so on the record. And if you think that the result is inequitable as a result of the process, then you have the opportunity to appeal to the Superior Court based on those procedural, perceived procedural deficiencies.
And may I ask, again.
And I just, I wasn't done.
I'm sorry, certainly. I'm sorry. I took a breath. I'm sorry.
And when, well, and when you asked who was running the show, generally speaking, the board chairman is up there and decides who can speak and when. But the show is the applicant's show to make because they have the obligation to present the proofs. So, it's my obligation to make objections. And if you notice, when I make an objection, I stop and wait for the board chairman or the board attorney to either say, yes, it's an objection, you can't do that. Or sometimes I say, no, you know, you're wrong. Let them ask the question. So, it's our presentation.
I understand the process. I've gone before OAL and PERC for 39 years.
OAL and PERC are very different than the municipal land use law. OAL.
I understand that.
Very different.
But the questions and the process is very much alike in terms of objections and answering.
It's, the OAL is the Office of Administrative Law. This is a quasi-judicial board of volunteers. And again, you don't get to challenge them throughout the process. If you have a challenge, you can state it at the end or you can file an appeal.
Fine. Thank you for the answer. Thank you very much. Okay, that's it. You can have your mic back.
So, you want to have this gentleman here?
Yeah, I mean, the intention is to wrap up the public portion. That one doesn't work certain.
Jim Bay, David Street?
Hi.
Jim Bay on David Street. If we could take a look at his last submission on the 10th and on figure two. And figure two is the existing traffic volumes.
And figure two is the existing traffic volumes. If I could ask you about the southwest jug handle, the southeast jug handles, the traffic turning left going west.
Southeast, southwest.
I'm with you, go ahead. I'm with you.
Right. In the southwest jug handle were one hundred and thirty cars, one hundred and thirty-seven cars.
Saturday peak hour, correct.
Coming in from the north is thirty percent of three hundred and seventy-three cars, which includes the bypass and the new. So going into that jug handle, on top of the one hundred and thirty-seven, hold on, you're losing. So there's a hundred and thirty-seven cars that went southbound on thirty-five to deal road eastbound.
Go ahead, ask your next question.
Coming from the north.
That's what we just discussed.
Is a hundred and eleven that will eventually feed into the project.
So now you're talking about site traffic.
Is now in that jug handle, yes.
We're still talking about figure two?
Yes.
Figure two is just existing traffic.
Here is, here's figure two, one hundred and thirty-seven.
Yes, sir.
You're grabbing a hundred and eleven coming in.
So let's go to the site traffic figures. And we can talk about those. Yeah, so referring to figure eleven in our study, we would add seventy from the north heading south on thirty-five to that jug handle that you asked me about.
Figure eleven?
Yes, sir.
It's not accurate.
Figure eleven is not accurate, it's a hundred and eleven.
Again, there are seventy additional vehicles to the southbound jug handle to take you eastbound attributed to this project.
That is not accurate.
Again, this is not an opportunity to offer accuracy and accuracy, it's questions.
It's thirty each times a hun, three hundred and seventy-three is a hundred and eleven. It's thirty times three hundred and seventy-three. There are a hundred and eleven addition on top of the one hundred and thirty-seven. Coming from the west is an additional.
Mr. Verley, I have to make an objection. If during the public portion, Mr. Bay wants to offer testimony as to inaccuracy in the report, he's welcome to, but at this point, it's questions for Mr. DiSario.
I was asking him, was it a hundred and eleven?
What's your answer?
No.
From the west is eighteen percent of three hundred and seventy-three.
Again, referring to figure eleven, what would you like to know in terms of the traffic attributed to this development and any of the movements shown on that figure?
When he says attributed, how he phrases that is he's only looking at new. Are you only looking at new and you are, you are not looking at the bypass that's coming through there?
Incorrect.
Then it's a hundred and eleven.
That's not correct.
All right, let's try again in the center of the whole thing. Back to two, please. Please ask it in the form of a question, sir. Figure two, please.
Can I make a suggestion? It sounds like Mr. Bay has an analysis that.
I didn't know he was not coming back.
But you have an analysis of my, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm not trying to put word, that you believe is correct. And you can certainly present that when you make public comment as opposed to questioning him as to whether he agrees with you or not. You can just put it on the record and now it's part of the record and the board has to consider it.
You are going to make engineering design analyses in the next six months that are going to take place before this will occur. I can't, there's a hundred and twelve percent more on the southwest jug, but we can't, we can't say those things because we can't go back and forth. There's ninety-one percent more on the southeast jug.
Sir, sir.
He can say all of these things, he just can't say them at this portion of the hearing.
He has answered your question, sir, and he does not agree with you, Mr. Bay. The witness does not agree with your interpretation. And he's not coming back? Oh, he'll be back in the end sometime, I'm sure. But not on the next? Um, I'm not sure, that's up to.
No, I.
Well, actually, he might not be back.
Where I was going was.
No, he does not have to come back for anybody's expert.
But if if you put your analysis on the record, as we were just discussing, and it's valid, he may want to come back to refute it.
That's up to the.
So sit down with Mr. Kirk.
I'm sorry.
So sit down with Mr. Kirk.
About engineering and traffic.
No, for example, if during the public portion.
The engineering would have all taken place by then?
During the public portion, if you offer testimony that we think somehow needs to be further explained by my engineer, I would put my engineer back up.
Yeah, let me, maybe it's helpful to clarify what we talked about in the beginning. Normally, an applicant has all its experts testify. And then, at the end of that time, the objectors provide all their experts. And then at the end of the process, their public comments. However, and maybe that's what you're thinking, but in this context, in order to make this more fair for everybody and also pragmatic, next time, there will be apparently a traffic expert who testifies. And then, at the end of that time, we would have public comment with regards to the traffic issue.
No, that isn't what.
Why not?
Well, he's got a public comment, he may want to make public comment in case he puts forth his analysis.
Right.
He's go, he's presenting a witness, I mean, the the objectors are presenting a witness.
Right.
Whichever ones, and then he can be questioned.
Right.
The same way my witnesses are being questioned.
Right.
But the public comment is at the end of the hearing. That's what was, we, I attempted.
Typically it is, but I mean, if if he has comment on traffic and an alternative analysis, right?
Now I understand how he got to the seventy.
Would you not want to hear that before you re-engineer the whole plan?
So, so, from what I'm understa, but that isn't what we discuss. What you're suggesting is not only am I going to extend the courtesy and allow the objectors expert to offer testimony, but you also want to hear all of the testimony from the laypeople as well?
On that one issue.
I think regarding traffic is the fair thing because isn't, isn't the.
That's the board's discretion to do that.
But isn't it more pragmatic on everyone's behalf because I I think there's, with the primary interest, so let's get down to it. Traffic trees and drainage, that's what it's about. Traffic trees and drainage, okay? No one cares about, haven't heard a word about architectural, I mean, I'm not minimizing anything, but nobody's complained about that.
Don't preclude anything.
Having said that. From a pragmatic point of view, before you re-engineer this whole site, would you not want to know if there's a valid point to be made by an alternative analysis?
Like this gentleman, for example.
That's what I'm saying, so.
He removed the bypass, he removed this forty bypass from the seventy. Seventy, forty is a hundred and eleven.
All right.
So is he still wrong?
No, no, hold on.
Yes, he is.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we should just make this very clear.
He's deliberately removing.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, so we're very clear on, from everybody's point of view, we're going to hear from a traffic expert that's being provided by some members of the public.
Which Mrs. Hanut will email a list to Ron of the names of the members.
Yeah, well, that's collaterally correct. And and so, Mr. Chairman, do you want to make a formal declaration or not? That we will hear from the public, not with regards to questions of this witness, because that's ending tonight. But if this gentleman, just for example, has comments, which may, may be something that the board would listen to, would the board want to have that done before the board makes a decision or at least a recommendation as to which way that the applicant should go? Because there's got to be a lot of engineering, just for one. Mr. Chair.
I think that we should go in that direction.
Okay?
One person at a time, man.
An, an objector. Right, an objector can't present a, an expert witness and then also attempt to put in alternative analysis.
Well, if, all right, let's make it clear. So if three people are bringing in an expert and there's others who aren't directly being represented by that expert, there, there are other people in the audience.
I'm not talking about the others, I'm talking about Mrs. Hanut. She said she was part of the group that was hiring the expert, so either her expert's going to provide the testimony or she is.
I knew you were pointing to her, but you're making a general comment. So let's just be clear that, I understand what your objection will be. But it's also clear that for those who are out there and they want to make comments, for example, this gentleman, may or may not be part of that group. So if he's not part of that group, he would be able to come back and make a, and he's indicating, I think, that, I don't know, that means safe or he's not part of that group, but I, it sounds like he's going to come back next time or the appropriate time and try to have some comments.
Now, if I could just clarify, I'm certainly not suggesting that that takes away the public's ability to place an objection on the record and make a comment at the end. All I'm saying. Again, or, or talk about how it will be personally impactful to them. All I'm saying is, is that if you're hiring a traffic expert, any traffic analysis needs to come through that expert. If you want to, if the public wants to offer testimony generally about the impact to them individually without expertise like analysis.
Yeah, I'm glad you clarified that.
I wouldn't object to that.
No, well, ma'am, we're not going to do that now because we're ending the hearing tonight because.
So I'd ask the, I'd ask the board members to close the public questioning.
Right.
I think that the due process was well served, there was adequate questioning based on what was offered. Clearly, there's going to be additional testimony from their own experts and themselves. So it has to close the public as to Dan and we can move on to allow their expert to testify the next minute.
Would somebody make a motion?
I, I don't want to close. This is an important issue. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, please, 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 don't, don't say anything for the audience. I don't, I think that he should come back again. It's an important issue.
So we're going to continue with his questioning at the next meeting as opposed to going into when we've, I thought the board committed that the traffic expert from the objectors was going to get on. We could spend the whole next hearing doing this again.
We did, Joe. We committed to have the traffic expert from Jackie's group on next time.
Okay.
So, wha, what are you suggesting?
Well, he's not going to refute, I want to hear what he has to say.
Oh, you want him here to refute?
All right, let's suggest, maybe we can suggest this. So Ms. Krimko's trying, I would submit, she's trying to make sure that the process is clear. So at the objectors or the neighbors' expert will testify.
No, I have to object, Sandy, I'm sorry. If we're not closing the public portion, then I cannot commit at this point that there's going to be availability for the neighbors to present their traffic expert. If the questions go on for two hours for Mr. DiSario, then there won't, then there may not be time. I am not willing.
Let me ask it this way.
Yeah.
If we close publicly, we could ask, we could raise questions to bring back the, Mr. DiSario.
Certainly, if the, yes, and certainly.
That's where I was going.
Yes.
That's where I was going.
And, yes.
I don't have an objection.
And, and certainly, in the event the traffic expert says something that we believe needs to be refuted through our own affirmative testimony that I can't address during cross-examination, you betcha that Mr. DiSario will be back.
Right.
I just mean with regard to questions as to his testimony up to this point.
And I object to not being able to question him. He refused to speak to me on the June tenth study.
Are you referring to the question you just posed him now?
I had a large series of questions on the June tenth.
I think ten thirty at night.
May tenth.
We only had, thank you very much, which we only had an appropriate amount of time for which I had to redo all of my previous studies because now the June, the May tenth one required I re-compute everything from three hundred and thirty-eight to three hundred and seventy-three.
Okay, sir, sir, let me just say something. When we opened the meeting, I put time limitations on it. Right? And I did. You have some very intricate and well-thought-out questions, which I'm very impressed with and I like to hear them. But there were other questions before you that took a lot of time that weren't so pertinent. Correct? You, you would agree with that? And now, the board members here, they had agreed to close the meeting in a certain time. They're getting tired, so what can I do for you? I cannot force Mrs. Krimko, uh, Ms. Krimko.
Did you allow the municipality to sit down with my engineer? I spoke with him and he wanted, an estimate was five hundred dollars potentially for me to sit down with municipal engineer.
He asked me how to set up a PR.
I, I don't know anything about that, sir. You're talking about Mr.
I don't have an objection. If you want to sit down with Mr. Fitzgerald to go over your numbers and go over the report, I don't have an objection to that.
The municipality is agreeable to that, I'm agreeable to that.
We said earlier that we would.
I would even go so.
He wanted me to pay to sit down with the municipality.
No, it would be on.
No, 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 no.
It would be on the developer's dime if it's being done as a result of this application. But I would go so far as to say that it might make sense to not only have Bill there, but to have Mr. DiSario there as well and you could, all three of you go up. Okay.
And Mr. Kirk should be.
That.
I will be the moderator.
I'm not going to be there. So my suggestion would be we'd be happy to accommodate a meeting.
No, no, you can't.
And then.
I have no say in this, this is between, this is between you.
Yeah, leave it.
Technical review meetings with people.
We're happy to do it.
I misspoke, I thought anyone that wanted one had to pay the five hundred dollars to get it scheduled like it, but if it, if it's, I don't have any problem one way or the other.
Well, Ms. Krimko is saying she'll pay for it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying it can be taken out of the applicant's escrow for you to meet with and, and get your last name. B A Y?
After the meeting is over, I would like to ask that Bill, Mr. DiSario, and Mr. Bay and myself schedule a time probably this week at a mutually convenient time.
Anytime flexible, within their ten days before.
I would, I would prefer to get it done before Friday so that we can put one thing on my desk.
All right, good, so that's a very productive step. So Ms. Krimko, what's your position since whatever Mr. Bay wants to share with the expert and your experts?
Again, I, I'll make my expert available to you and then if Mr. Bay disagrees, then at the public portion, when he offers his comments, he can systematically explain why he thinks Mr. DiSario's report is right or wrong.
Good, I think that Mr. Bay is taking it in affirm, it sounds like it's fair process.
I mean, I didn't ask Dan if it was okay, but I'm assuming it's okay.
He doesn't care.
Okay, so at this point.
For the record, it's ten thirty.
Yes, for the record, it's ten thirty. Will somebody make a motion to close the public portion of this?
Mr. Bay, please.
No, he started, you didn't say.
Roll call of vote.
Mr. Verley?
Yes.
Dr. DiManedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Fabilia?
Yes.
Mr. Sisiano?
Yes.